I can hear you, Kealan, but there's a slight echo.
Test, test.
That's a little better.
So you can hear everything in Zoom?
Yes.
Okay, perfect. Thanks, Christina.
No problem.
In progress. In progress. In progress.
This is the This is the This is the June 20, June 1st, 2022 morning session of the Portland City Council. June 20, June 1st, 2022 morning session of the Portland City Council. June 20, June 1st, 2022 morning session of the Portland City Council. Good morning, Kealan. Please call the roll. Good morning, Kealan. Please call the roll. Good morning, Kealan. Please call the roll.
Good morning, Mayor. Good morning, Commissioners. Ryan Hardisty. Good morning, Mayor. Good morning, Commissioners. Ryan Hardisty. Good morning, Mayor. Good morning, Commissioners. Ryan Hardisty. Maps. Maps. Maps.
Here. Here.
Here.
Sorry, Rubio. Sorry, Rubio. Sorry, Rubio.
Here. Here.
Here.
Wheeler. Wheeler. Wheeler.
Here. And now we'll hear from legal counsel on the rules of order and decorum. Here. And now we'll hear from legal counsel on the rules of order and decorum. Here. And now we'll hear from legal counsel on the rules of order and decorum.
Thank you, Mayor. Good morning, Mayor and Commissioners. Welcome to the Portland City Council. Thank you, Mayor. Good morning, Mayor and Commissioners. Welcome to the Portland City Council.
Thank you, Mayor. Good morning, Mayor and Commissioners. Welcome to the Portland City Council.
City Council is holding hybrid public meetings with limited in-person attendance in addition to electronic attendance. City Council is holding hybrid public meetings with limited in-person attendance in addition to electronic attendance.
City Council is holding hybrid public meetings with limited in-person attendance in addition to electronic attendance.
If you wish to testify before council in person or virtually, you must sign up in advance If you wish to testify before council in person or virtually, you must sign up in advance
If you wish to testify before council in person or virtually, you must sign up in advance by visiting the council agenda on the council clerk's webpage
by visiting the council agenda on the council clerk's webpage at www portland.gov/council/agenda. by visiting the council agenda on the council clerk's webpage at www portland.gov/council/agenda.
at www-portland.gov/council/agenda.
You may sign up for communications to briefly speak about any subject. You may sign up for communications to briefly speak about any subject.
You may sign up for communications to briefly speak about any subject.
You may also sign up for public testimony on resolutions, reports, or the first readings of ordinances.
You may also sign up for public testimony on resolutions, reports, or the first readings of ordinances.
You may also sign up for public testimony on resolutions, reports, or the first readings of ordinances. In-person testimony may occur from one of several locations, including city council chambers,
In-person testimony may occur from one of several locations, including city council chambers,
In-person testimony may occur from one of several locations, including city council chambers, and the Lovejoy Room in City Hall and the Portland Building.
and the Lovejoy Room in City Hall and the Portland Building.
and the Lovejoy Room in City Hall and the Portland Building. Written testimony may be submitted at cctestimony@portlandoregon.gov.
Written testimony may be submitted at cctestimony@portlandoregon.gov.
Written testimony may be submitted at cctestimony@portlandoregon.gov. Your testimony should address the matter being considered at the time.
Your testimony should address the matter being considered at the time.
Your testimony should address the matter being considered at the time.
When testifying, please state your name for the record. Your address is not necessary.
When testifying, please state your name for the record. Your address is not necessary. When testifying, please state your name for the record. Your address is not necessary. Please disclose if you are lobbyist. If you are representing an organization, please identify it.
Please disclose if you are lobbyist. If you are representing an organization, please identify it.
Please disclose if you are lobbyist. If you are representing an organization, please identify it.
The presiding officer preserves order and decorum during city council meetings so everyone can feel welcome, comfortable, respected, and safe.
The presiding officer preserves order and decorum during city council meetings so everyone can feel welcome, comfortable, respected, and safe. The presiding officer preserves order and decorum during city council meetings so everyone can feel welcome, comfortable, respected, and safe. The presiding officer determines the length of testimony.
The presiding officer determines the length of testimony.
The presiding officer determines the length of testimony. Individuals generally have three minutes to testify unless otherwise stated.
Individuals generally have three minutes to testify unless otherwise stated.
Individuals generally have three minutes to testify unless otherwise stated. A timer will indicate when the time is done.
A timer will indicate when the time is done.
A timer will indicate when the time is done.
Disruptive conduct such as shouting, refusing to conclude your testimony when your time is up,
Disruptive conduct such as shouting, refusing to conclude your testimony when your time is up, Disruptive conduct such as shouting, refusing to conclude your testimony when your time is up,
or interrupting others' testimony or council deliberations will not be allowed.
or interrupting others' testimony or council deliberations will not be allowed. or interrupting others' testimony or council deliberations will not be allowed.
If there are disruptions, a warning will be given that further disruption may result in the person being ejected for the rest, remainder of the meeting.
If there are disruptions, a warning will be given that further disruption may result in the person being ejected for the rest, remainder of the meeting. If there are disruptions, a warning will be given that further disruption may result in the person being ejected for the rest, remainder of the meeting. After being ejected, a person who fails to leave the meeting is subject to arrest for trespass.
After being ejected, a person who fails to leave the meeting is subject to arrest for trespass.
After being ejected, a person who fails to leave the meeting is subject to arrest for trespass. Additionally, council may take a short recess and reconvene virtually. Thank you.
Additionally, council may take a short recess and reconvene virtually. Thank you.
Additionally, council may take a short recess and reconvene virtually. Thank you.
All right, first up is communications. First item 460. All right, first up is communications. First item 460. All right, first up is communications. First item 460.
Request of Hayden Alexander to address council regarding Portland elected official. They have not arrived yet. Request of Hayden Alexander to address council regarding Portland elected official. They have not arrived yet. Request of Hayden Alexander to address council regarding Portland elected official. They have not arrived yet.
All right, 461, please. All right, 461, please. All right, 461, please.
Request of Nick Reedy to address council regarding equity and inclusivity. They have not arrived. Request of Nick Reedy to address council regarding equity and inclusivity. They have not arrived. Request of Nick Reedy to address council regarding equity and inclusivity. They have not arrived.
462, please. 462, please. 462, please.
Request of Aubrey Russell to address council regarding Thompson Fountain legal protections. Request of Aubrey Russell to address council regarding Thompson Fountain legal protections. Request of Aubrey Russell to address council regarding Thompson Fountain legal protections.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning.
How are we doing here? How are we doing here? How are we doing here?
We can hear you loud and clear. We can hear you loud and clear. We can hear you loud and clear.
All right. Aubrey Russell, I wanted to thank you for your resolution regarding the Thompson Fountain. All right. Aubrey Russell, I wanted to thank you for your resolution regarding the Thompson Fountain. All right. Aubrey Russell, I wanted to thank you for your resolution regarding the Thompson Fountain. I wanted to talk a little bit about how we got here, though. I wanted to talk a little bit about how we got here, though. I wanted to talk a little bit about how we got here, though. I was very interested in Commissioners Ryan, Commissioner Ryan's comment on Facebook I was very interested in Commissioners Ryan, Commissioner Ryan's comment on Facebook I was very interested in Commissioner Ryan, Commissioner Ryan's comment on Facebook that he had listened to, quote, "public servants at City Hall that he had listened to, quote, "public servants at City Hall that he had listened to, quote, "public servants at City Hall who see this as an opportunity to reevaluate the public arts portfolio." who see this as an opportunity to reevaluate the public arts portfolio." who see this as an opportunity to reevaluate the public arts portfolio." As a member of the public, I was interested to learn of this effort in City Hall to reevaluate the public arts portfolio. As a member of the public, I was interested to learn of this effort in City Hall to reevaluate the public arts portfolio. As a member of the public, I was interested to learn of this effort in City Hall to reevaluate the public arts portfolio. My preference would be to take a, an additive approach to public art. My preference would be to take a, an additive approach to public art. My preference would be to take a, an additive approach to public art. If the city is going to take a subtractive approach to public art, If the city is going to take a subtractive approach to public art, then it shows more of a fighting spirit, maybe. If the city is going to take a subtractive approach to public art, then it shows more of a fighting spirit, maybe. then it shows more of a fighting spirit, maybe. That's fine, but it should be a fair fight. That's fine, but it should be a fair fight. That's fine, but it should be a fair fight. Fair means not resorting to untruths. Fair means not resorting to untruths. Fair means not resorting to untruths. Let me quote this email from Carmen Rubio's office, also sent from other commissioner offices. Let me quote this email from Carmen Rubio's office, also sent from other commissioner offices. Let me quote this email from Carmen Rubio's office, also sent from other commissioner offices. This part of the email was in bold and underlined. This part of the email was in bold and underlined. This part of the email was in bold and underlined. Quote, "That step is happening now and does not influence or predetermine Quote, "That step is happening now and does not influence or predetermine Quote, "That step is happening now and does not influence or predetermine any future action relating to the Thompson, to the Elk or Fountain." any future action relating to the Thompson, to the Elk or Fountain." any future action relating to the Thompson, to the Elk or Fountain." The step here is demolition delay. The step here is demolition delay. The step here is demolition delay. The code section is titled "Removal of Historic Landmark Designation." The code section is titled "Removal of Historic Landmark Designation." The code section is titled "Removal of Historic Landmark Designation." So city staff must have known that demolition delay, in fact, does influence and predetermine future action. So city staff must have known that demolition delay, in fact, does influence and predetermine future action. So city staff must have known that demolition delay, in fact, does influence and predetermine future action. It does so in three ways. First, it removes the presumption of restoration. It does so in three ways. First, it removes the presumption of restoration. It does so in three ways. First, it removes the presumption of restoration. Second, it removes the Historic Landmarks Commission from having jurisdiction. Second, it removes the Historic Landmarks Commission from having jurisdiction. Second, it removes the Historic Landmarks Commission from having jurisdiction. And third, it removes the obligation under state law to protect historic landmarks. And third, it removes the obligation under state law to protect historic landmarks. And third, it removes the obligation under state law to protect historic landmarks. How does this level of untruth get into official city emails? How does this level of untruth get into official city emails? How does this level of untruth get into official city emails? The answer is staffing. The answer is staffing. The answer is staffing. The emails also contain this untruth about demolition delay, that it, quote, The emails also contain this untruth about demolition delay, that it, quote, The emails also contain this untruth about demolition delay, that it, quote, "needs to take place in order to be in code compliance." "needs to take place in order to be in code compliance." "needs to take place in order to be in code compliance." That is saying, in effect, that to restore the Elk, you have to remove historic landmark protections. That is saying, in effect, that to restore the Elk, you have to remove historic landmark protections. That is saying, in effect, that to restore the Elk, you have to remove historic landmark protections. That is an untruth. That is an untruth. That is an untruth. Staff at the city and Carmen Rubio's office in the city arts program Staff at the city and Carmen Rubio's office in the city arts program Staff at the city and Carmen Rubio's office in the city arts program took the lead on this matter and pushed for their preferred outcome. took the lead on this matter and pushed for their preferred outcome. took the lead on this matter and pushed for their preferred outcome. But if you choose a subtractive approach to public art, then you should stay within the limits of a fair fight. But if you choose a subtractive approach to public art, then you should stay within the limits of a fair fight. But if you choose a subtractive approach to public art, then you should stay within the limits of a fair fight. Untruths are not within those limits. Untruths are not within those limits. Untruths are not within those limits. Moving forward, I suggest an additive approach to public art. Moving forward, I suggest an additive approach to public art. Moving forward, I suggest an additive approach to public art. Carmen Rubio, the Arts Commissioner, will play an important role, as will Jeff Hawthorne. Carmen Rubio, the Arts Commissioner, will play an important role, as will Jeff Hawthorne. Carmen Rubio, the Arts Commissioner, will play an important role, as will Jeff Hawthorne. If I, as I have explained in the past, RAC has a history of straying from the truth If I, as I have explained in the past, RAC has a history of straying from the truth If I, as I have explained in the past, RAC has a history of straying from the truth in its zeal to remove public art. in its zeal to remove public art. in its zeal to remove public art. I'd add now that Portland Parks and Recreation, in the matter of the Thompson Fountain, I'd add now that Portland Parks and Recreation, in the matter of the Thompson Fountain, I'd add now that Portland Parks and Recreation, in the matter of the Thompson Fountain, has showed itself surprisingly unconcerned with understanding basic facts about its support for removing the fountain. has showed itself surprisingly unconcerned with understanding basic facts about its support for removing the fountain. has showed itself surprisingly unconcerned with understanding basic facts about its support for removing the fountain. I hope that in the future, the city can focus more on facts and on accuracy. I hope that in the future, the city can focus more on facts and on accuracy. I hope that in the future, the city can focus more on facts and on accuracy. Also, most importantly, on an additive approach to public art. Thank you. Also, most importantly, on an additive approach to public art. Thank you. Also, most importantly, on an additive approach to public art. Thank you.
Thank you, Aubrey. And while I've got you on the horn here, Thank you, Aubrey. And while I've got you on the horn here, Thank you, Aubrey. And while I've got you on the horn here, we had a good presentation, as you know, on the Thompson Elk Project the other day, and there were some we had a good presentation, as you know, on the Thompson Elk Project the other day, and there were some we had a good presentation, as you know, on the Thompson Elk Project the other day, and there were some residents who came forward and said that they were seeking funding to complete the project. residents who came forward and said that they were seeking funding to complete the project. residents who came forward and said that they were seeking funding to complete the project. And I expressed an interest, and I received a card. And I expressed an interest, and I received a card. And I expressed an interest, and I received a card. But when I got home, I realized the card didn't actually have a phone number on it. But when I got home, I realized the card didn't actually have a phone number on it. But when I got home, I realized the card didn't actually have a phone number on it. If, if you know the folks who can help me out with that, could you have them connect with me or through my office? If, if you know the folks who can help me out with that, could you have them connect with me or through my office? If, if you know the folks who can help me out with that, could you have them connect with me or through my office? That, that. That, that.
I will, I will have them send something to your staff via email. I will, I will have them send something to your staff via email. I will, I will have them send something to your staff via email.
Perfect. Thanks. I appreciate that. Thanks, Aubrey. Perfect. Thanks. I appreciate that. Thanks, Aubrey. Perfect. Thanks. I appreciate that. Thanks, Aubrey.
All right, thank you. All right, thank you. All right, thank you.
Next individual, please. Item number 463. Next individual, please. Item number 463. Next individual, please. Item number 463.
Request of Kamala Patti to address council regarding Portland. They haven't arrived yet. Request of Kamala Patti to address council regarding Portland. They haven't arrived yet. Request of Kamala Patti to address council regarding Portland. They haven't arrived yet.
Where is everybody today? Have any of the others arrived yet? Where is everybody today? Have any of the others arrived yet? Where is everybody today? Have any of the others arrived yet?
One more. One more. One more.
Yeah, why don't you go back to the, well, we can, why don't we go to the last one if they're here, 464. Yeah, why don't you go back to the, well, we can, why don't we go to the last one if they're here, 464. Yeah, why don't you go back to the, well, we can, why don't we go to the last one if they're here, 464.
Okay, thank you. Request of Georgia Ware to address council regarding banning the sale of foie gras. Okay, thank you. Request of Georgia Ware to address council regarding banning the sale of foie gras. Okay, thank you. Request of Georgia Ware to address council regarding banning the sale of foie gras.
Good morning, Georgia. Good morning, Georgia. Good morning, Georgia.
Hello, I am Georgia Ware, and I'm speaking today to ask you to support a ban on the sale of foie gras in Portland.
Hello, I am Georgia Ware, and I'm speaking today to ask you to support a ban on the sale of foie gras in Portland.
Hello, I am Georgia Ware, and I'm speaking today to ask you to support a ban on the sale of foie gras in Portland. Foie gras is considered to be a specialty food.
Foie gras is considered to be a specialty food.
Foie gras is considered to be a specialty food.
It's a very expensive one, made of the liver of a duck or goose that has been fattened by the process
It's a very expensive one, made of the liver of a duck or goose that has been fattened by the process
It's a very expensive one, made of the liver of a duck or goose that has been fattened by the process
known as gavage or force feeding.
known as gavage or force feeding.
known as gavage or force feeding.
In the United States, this involves a torturous process of inserting a tube down a bird's esophagus
In the United States, this involves a torturous process of inserting a tube down a bird's esophagus
In the United States, this involves a torturous process of inserting a tube down a bird's esophagus
and feeding it using a pneumatic or hydraulic pump.
and feeding it using a pneumatic or hydraulic pump.
and feeding it using a pneumatic or hydraulic pump.
This causes extreme pain to the animal, and this goes on for weeks until the bird dies or is killed.
This causes extreme pain to the animal, and this goes on for weeks until the bird dies or is killed.
This causes extreme pain to the animal, and this goes on for weeks until the bird dies or is killed. The sale and/or production of foie gras has already been banned in New York City,
The sale and/or production of foie gras has already been banned in New York City,
The sale and/or production of foie gras has already been banned in New York City,
the state of California, and several countries.
the state of California, and several countries.
the state of California, and several countries.
Portland can easily take this step now and serve as an example to the rest of the state.
Portland can easily take this step now and serve as an example to the rest of the state.
Portland can easily take this step now and serve as an example to the rest of the state.
And I say easily because over 80 restaurants, retailers, and food manufacturers in Portland
And I say easily because over 80 restaurants, retailers, and food manufacturers in Portland
And I say easily because over 80 restaurants, retailers, and food manufacturers in Portland
have written to you in support of this ban.
have written to you in support of this ban.
have written to you in support of this ban. I've had the opportunity to live in a home in Colorado that had backyard ducks and geese.
I've had the opportunity to live in a home in Colorado that had backyard ducks and geese.
I've had the opportunity to live in a home in Colorado that had backyard ducks and geese.
Young people had used these birds in 4H projects.
Young people had used these birds in 4H projects.
Young people had used these birds in 4H projects.
The primary caretaker in the house I, where I was living, for these 4H retiree birds
The primary caretaker in the house I, where I was living, for these 4H retiree birds
The primary caretaker in the house I, where I was living, for these 4H retiree birds
grew up in a ranching family.
grew up in a ranching family.
grew up in a ranching family. So this, she was not a vegetarian, and this is not an issue specifically
So this, she was not a vegetarian, and this is not an issue specifically
So this, she was not a vegetarian, and this is not an issue specifically
sponsored by vegetarians.
sponsored by vegetarians.
sponsored by vegetarians. I got to watch these ducks and geese thrive, just living their lives, eating, drinking, bathing.
I got to watch these ducks and geese thrive, just living their lives, eating, drinking, bathing.
I got to watch these ducks and geese thrive, just living their lives, eating, drinking, bathing.
Having had this experience, the idea of thousands of other ducks and geese
Having had this experience, the idea of thousands of other ducks and geese
Having had this experience, the idea of thousands of other ducks and geese
being tortured for weeks before being killed is particularly appalling.
being tortured for weeks before being killed is particularly appalling.
being tortured for weeks before being killed is particularly appalling.
So please take action now and pass a city ordinance prohibiting the sale of foie gras in Portland.
So please take action now and pass a city ordinance prohibiting the sale of foie gras in Portland.
So please take action now and pass a city ordinance prohibiting the sale of foie gras in Portland.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate your testimony. Thank you. Appreciate your testimony. Thank you. Appreciate your testimony. Kealan, did any of the other individuals show up? Kealan, did any of the other individuals show up? Kealan, did any of the other individuals show up?
No, no mayor. No, no mayor. No, no mayor.
All right, very good. Have any items been pulled from the consent agenda? All right, very good. Have any items been pulled from the consent agenda? All right, very good. Have any items been pulled from the consent agenda?
Two items have been pulled, 470 and 471. Two items have been pulled, 470 and 471. Two items have been pulled, 470 and 471.
470, 471, please call the roll on the remainder of the consent agenda. 470, 471, please call the roll on the remainder of the consent agenda. 470, 471, please call the roll on the remainder of the consent agenda.
Hardisty. Hardisty. Hardisty.
Aye. Aye. Aye.
Maps. Maps. Maps.
Aye. Aye. Aye.
Rubio. Rubio. Rubio.
Aye. Aye. Aye.
Wheeler. Wheeler. Wheeler.
Aye. Consent agenda is approved. Aye. Consent agenda is approved. Aye. Consent agenda is approved. Do we have, is Heidi here for 477? Do we have, is Heidi here for 477? Do we have, is Heidi here for 477? We'll take a four-minute recess till we get to our first time certain we're in recess. We'll take a four-minute recess till we get to our first time certain we're in recess. We'll take a four-minute recess till we get to our first time certain we're in recess. We're good. Okay, very good. Item number 465, please, an emergency ordinance.
Amend the comprehensive plan, zoning map, and Title 33, planning and zoning, to comply with House Bill 2001 and Senate Bill 458.
Commissioner Rubio. Oh, I'm sorry, I have Yeah, this is a second reading. No, it's not. What is this? Oh, I see. It's the residential infill, so it's a little weird. Okay, so we've reached the final vote on the residential infill project, Part II. In order to meet the state's required compliance deadline, this item is being passed with an emergency ordinance so there will not be a second reading, per se. Before we vote on the project in full, we need to amend some of the documents that are before council. On May 19th, council passed several amendments to the Planning and Sustainability Commission's recommended draft. Staff have incorporated our amendments into the adopting ordinance, as well as some of the other documents. So with that, colleagues, I move to adopt the following documents. The ordinance is amended, the Exhibit A findings is amended, Exhibit B, RIP2 staff report recommended draft is amended, Exhibit C, RIP2 code amendments recommended draft is amended, and Exhibit D, buildable lands inventory flood and slope hazard maps. Can I please get a second?
A second.
Commissioner Hardisty, seconds. Any further discussion? Kealan, please call the roll on the RIP2 as amended documents.
Hardisty.
Let me just start by thanking the Bureau of Planning and Sustainability staff for, once again, doing the really difficult work of trying to balance a variety of interests. I want to thank Commissioner Rubio for her leadership in ensuring that we took the time to hear concerns and work with community to make sure that as we continue to build housing, because we are in desperate need of more housing, that, that we have the flexibility necessary, as well as the, the policies in place to ensure that we can continue to do so in a way that fits our environmental, our climate, and our racial justice goals. So I'm very happy to vote aye.
Maps.
Aye.
Rubio.
I want to start by thanking the Planning and Sustainability Commission for their review and recommendations to RIP2. I also know that the commission was challenged by the tight timeline afforded by the state's compliance deadline and appreciate that, within that shortened timeframe, they were still able to include several important amendments to strengthen the project before unanimously voting to recommend for approval. I also want to thank members of the public that participated in this project by offering their personal stories and insight. It's through this dialogue that we further the goals around housing and what, which keeps Portland at the forefront of innovation in housing policy. I want to lift up the excellent work done by the Bureau of Planning and Sustainability staff, Sandra Wood, Morgan Tracy, Shannon Bueno, JP McNeil, and Phil Nemeny, who adapted to these changes very nimbly along the way to ensure that the project remained on track in order not just to meet our obligations under state law, but to deliver zoning code provisions that can serve as a model to cities across the state and country. There is much interest in all these adopted changes, and I look forward to seeing the result of these new roles. And I also want to remind everyone that this year's budget, we included a budget note to monitor the outcomes of RIP2, including impact on tree canopy, and come back in the future to update and modify as needed. So for these reasons, I vote aye.
Wheeler.
I want to, again, thank and staff for their, thank staff for their work on this and all the residents who testified, affordable housing providers, and many, many other stakeholders who are engaged, who we heard from in recent weeks. Portland was a national leader on this issue with RIP1. And now we're doing some catch-up to make sure that our rules are consistent with recent changes in state law. I'm very glad to have another, another opportunity to vote for more housing options in our city, and I look forward to continuing conversations about how we can address our housing shortage and ensure that Portland is a place where people from all different backgrounds have the opportunity to live. So I am very happy to vote aye. So this item passes?
Mayor, sorry. That was the vote on the amendments. Now you got to do one more vote on the package as amended.
Okay, very good. Please call the roll on the package as amended.
Hardisty.
Aye.
Maps.
I want to thank all the members of the public who testified on this item. I also wanted to express my admiration to all the staff at Planning and Sustainability for navigating what is a very complicated project. And finally, I want to recognize and applaud Commissioners Rubio, Commissioner Rubio's leadership in bringing this item forward. For these reasons, the more I vote aye.
Rubio.
Aye.
Wheeler.
Thanks, everybody who worked hard on this. Commissioner Rubio, thank you for your team's work, your and your team's work on this. I, I do want to say one more thing. These are the kinds of things where a limited number of people get very engaged because they understand the consequences of what it is that's being done. And at first blush, this can look like pretty dry land use policy. But it will actually shape the direction, the physical direction of this city for decades to come. And I am very confident that this was the exact right strategy for us to pursue as a community. And I hope that those who follow us many, many years from now agree. I vote aye. The ordinance is adopted, is amended. This item is passed. It's an emergency ordinance. It'll go into effect on June 30th at 11:59 PM. Thank you all. This concludes this item. We're still too early to go to the next item. Do we have Heidi here for 477 on the regular agenda? I'm sorry?
Yes, Mayor, I'm on. Sorry. I had to unmute.
Let's move to item number 477, please, from the regular agenda.
Amend the Police Review Board code to change references to the auditor's office and make other process changes.
Very good. I'll turn this over to Heidi Brown, the chief deputy city attorney, to introduce this item. Thank you, Heidi, for coming on a little bit early.
Thank you, Mayor. This item, council, is predominantly to ensure that the Police Review Board code language comports with the changes to moving IPR out of the auditor's office. So you will see throughout there, changes references to the auditor over to the independent police review. In addition, there are some other changes that were requested either by the Police Bureau or that we're suggesting... The main change that we're suggesting that was not from the police review were references to citizen members and changing those to community member. Please note that references to the citizen review committee, I did not propose changing because that's, you know, a title for that group, and I thought that would be more involved to try to change that. But I did at least want to remove the word citizen wherever I could and change that to community member. In addition, the other changes were changes to, for example, remove the reference to, as a advisory member to the police review board, having an assistant chief not in the reporting change of the involved member, and instead inviting the equity member for Portland Police... Excuse me, the equity manager for the Portland Police Bureau to attend police review board meetings. There was one change that I had included in there, which was allowing facilitation of the police review board to occur by the review board coordinator, and that's because there's been some problems finding facilitators. And right now, the contract is up, and they're trying to find new facilitators for the police review board and are having some trouble. So the change would be to allow the police review board coordinator to also fill that role. The... Another change that is in there that I am going to ask, Mayor, if you would make a motion to amend and remove one of the changes, and that has to do with a change that was requested that would have allowed, in instances for use of force, police review board meetings, they are required to not only have a community member, which is a normal requirement in any police review board hearing, but also in use of force cases to have a CRC member attend. In the past, approximately nine months ago to a year ago, there was difficulty at times getting a CRC member available to come to the PRB hearings within a reasonable amount of time, and the requested change was to allow for the community member to be drawn from the list of PRB community member volunteers, so to have two from the community volunteers for PRB rather than having one from that group and one from CRC. However, I overlooked, and I apologize for this, that the settlement agreement with the Department of Justice requires us to have that CRC member as the second member on the PRB hearings for use of force. So you will see in paragraph C2, there is a reference to, that references allowing for a PRB volunteer member to be put in place when a CRC member is not available, and I'd ask that you just delete that change because that will be in conflict with the DOJ settlement agreement.
I'll move the amendment with the deletion. Or is there more?
Nope. I was just going to say, that's the summary, and that in particular was the one amendment that I wanted to request.
Okay, I'll take it.
I'll second the amendment.
Second from Commissioner Hurdisty. Do you also have a question?
I have a question.
Sure.
Yes, I do. Thank you, Heidi, for that overview. I noticed a significant change in... Let's see. In C4, there's a big difference between a sustained finding and an out-of-policy finding. Why... That is a significant policy change. Why are we slipping that into this document?
And Commissioner, I'm sorry, I'm going to pull that up really fast so I can get to where you are, and I know what you're talking about. There was one change to... There are times where the police review board will have a... Will have a hearing when there is a disagreement between whether the finding should be not sustained, exonerated, or unfounded. All three of those are different than sustained. So sustained is the finding is that the action was out of policy. So out of policy in sustained. Sustained is just the word that they use rather than out of policy. And then...
I disagree with that. I think sustained has a legal definition as compared to out of policy, which does not. I'm not a lawyer, but when sustained means that you've been found guilty of something, and it's sustained, right? Out of policy means that you did not actually use the policy as intended, and I would actually see those two as significantly different policy conversations. Because...
Commissioner... Oh, sorry.
No, go ahead.
I was just going to say that the most important thing in these amendments is to remove the auditor and reference the IPR. So I would... If there are concerns with other changes, then if a council member wants to move to strike those, frankly, like I said, the main change that is critical that we get done as an emergency ordinance is to remove the references to the auditor. So if there are other ones, we could bring them back another time for your consideration and talk about them more fully. Frankly, from my perspective, the change from out of policy to sustained, if that's of concern to you, I don't see that as... It's not a necessary change, and I don't see it as something that's critical. So if you want to move to strike that amendment, Commissioner, I don't see a problem with that, frankly.
So I would move to strike that amendment. And I'm just concerned if the only thing we needed to do was to remove the auditor, why are we having conversations behind closed doors and changing policies with the PRB without having a fuller public dialogue? Because I know there have been a lot of changes that people have wanted, and... But it looks like we've talked to the police bureau about how they'd like to see it changed, which is the exact opposite of why we have the police review board. So I am very concerned, Mayor, that in an effort to remove the auditor, we have actually created more loopholes in the system that we have.
So I'll respond to that. This is a legal proceeding, and the settlement agreement is a legal document, and I'm relying on the expertise and the information provided by our attorneys.
It doesn't change the fact that we're actually changing the policy of Portland, of the police review board without actually having a conversation about changing the policy. If the goal is to remove the auditor, then we should remove the auditor, and we should have a fuller conversation. I mean, all lawyers don't agree, Mayor. You know, I agree with Heidi a lot, but sometimes I don't, and I think that this is a slippery slope when we are talking about a legally enforceable contract that actually is covered by the union contract. So I am very concerned that we, behind closed doors, make changes that will make it much more difficult to hold officers accountable for inappropriate behavior.
Well, I'd certainly be willing to hear our attorney's perspective. My thinking on this is that Heidi is our attorney. She's not an attorney, she is our attorney, and she represents the city in the settlement agreement. So her opinion weighs... Her experienced legal opinion weighs very heavily on me as I make decisions like this. But Heidi, can you respond to Commissioner Hurdisty?
Yeah, so Commissioner... Thank you, Mayor. Commissioner, certainly the changes that were made were absolutely not to undermine any accountability within our system. And if I thought that that was the outcome behind it, I certainly wouldn't be bringing those to you, or I would have raised that with you all ahead of time and talked through and talked to you why I would have thought that would be helpful. But I didn't see any of these as impacting the accountability. The... As I said at the beginning, the biggest things that I feel are critical that occur in this change are removal of the references to the auditor's office and changing that to IPR. That's necessary for us under the DOJ settlement agreement. I also felt it was important to remove references to citizens and instead refer to people as community members. Those things were very critical to me. The other things, I mean, as I scroll through these changes, there is a reference to whether or not there needs to be a police review board when there's a difference of opinion between not sustained, exonerated, or unfounded. And I think... I don't... Those are the differences between it's sustained or not sustained, and then there's variations of not sustained. It can be not sustained, exonerated, or unfounded. Those are the three different things. That change to not have a police review board when those are the only things, if council feels like that's impeding anything, I think that's fine to remove that as well. The next one is regarding a separation from employment. I don't think that does anything to undermine the process at all. In fact, what it says is simply that if somebody leaves city employment, and we haven't yet had a PRB, that the... We would reconvene that and pick it back up if they ever come back to city employment. I think that's a helpful change to have in there. I don't see any harm to the accountability system in that one, and I would ask that you maintain that change. As I said, the other reference to the assistant chief, who's not in the line of command, to the involved member, changing that to an equity manager, that seemed to me a positive change to bring a PPB equity manager to a police review board hearing. It's not necessary, but it seemed like a positive change to bring, and that person would sit as an advisory member. The next change is the one... Yes.
Excuse me, Heidi. If I may, we have at least four OIR group reports that recommended changes to the police review board. We have changes at the DOJ as well as the COCO has recommended changes to the police review board. We have not, in fact, had a public conversation about any changes other than removing the auditor from the police review board process. And so I am very concerned, as someone that you know cares very deeply about these issues, have been here since before, the settlement agreement was actually invited the DOJ to come to town. If I, as a member of the public and now a member of the council, feel like these changes are actually substantial as compared to minor, I would respect the fact that we take the time to actually redo what the OIR group recommended that we change. I mean, we're picking and choosing what changes to make to the PRB board at a time that we have a lot of requests for changes. I don't know how you came to the conclusion these were the right changes at this time. So I am concerned. I support totally removing the auditor from the process, but I cannot in good faith support these additional changes without additional conversation and dialogue. So that's where I am.
Yep. The only other matter, Commissioner, and I appreciate your perspective on this, is under paragraph J, stipulated findings and discipline, 2A and 2C, the references are to the old discipline guide where we had categories A through F. We now have categories A through E. So the change was to move the stipulated findings to be consistent with the new discipline guide, first-time offenses under the old discipline guide, first-time offenses that were allowed to go to stipulated discipline were categories A through D as in dog, and I'm recommending that you change that to A through C as in Charlie because we've collapsed the discipline guide categories from A to F to AD. And then also similarly, for first-time off-duty driving law under the influence offenses, it had to fall under category E as an echo. We have, again, changed category E significantly, and I was recommending that you change that to a lower category of category D. So what that would mean would be that for stipulated discipline, it would have to be a less serious offense in order for it to be eligible for stipulated discipline. So I just was scrolling down to the bottom of this. That's the only other change that I do think is important. But again, Commissioner, if you feel like it needs to be brought back to you without that change, or any of the other changes except the auditor, and again, I would ask that you change the reference from citizen to community member, we can bring that back another time.
Commissioner? Because, look, here's my view. Heidi, you're our attorney, and I trust your judgment on this. If I didn't trust your judgment, I'd hire a different attorney. So I'm prepared to vote for this, but I want to hear from Commissioner Hurdisty because it seems that she has significant misgivings.
Thank you, Mayor. I have already put on the record my concerns about there's a lot of changes that could happen, and it appears that we've picked and chose the changes that were appropriate for this one. I was prepared to vote today to support removing the auditor from this process. I think Heidi's recommendation that we change citizen to community member is always a good one. But other than that, I think that there's some unintended consequences with some of these changes that we have not actually fleshed out. I know that the police bureau would like to change this a lot. I also know that we've paid for studies that we've never made any of the changes that were recommended by the OIR group. I also know that the COCO has recommended changes, and I don't see those changes incorporated here. So we're either doing a pick-and-choose job, or we're going to do what we've actually said we need to do, which is remove the auditor.
Well, there's nothing here that precludes us from further changes, is there, Heidi? I mean, if we support these today, there's nothing that says we can't bring back additional changes at a future date after a thorough public process.
So I cannot support this today.
Understood. Commissioner Maps?
I think I have two questions. One's for Heidi. Heidi, I notice this is an emergency ordinance. Is there a particular... Is there something time-sensitive about this particular item?
Thank you, Commissioner. Yes, the time-sensitive issue is removing the reference to the auditor since IPR will no longer be under the auditor's office as of the end of the month, the end of this month. So it's on as an emergency ordinance in order to effectuate it by the end of the month.
Okay, thank you, Heidi. And I think I have an observation I'd like to share with council. It seems like there's... I assume there's broad agreement, even a consensus on council, that we need to make the basic changes about shifting the auditor's position around. It sounds like Commissioner Hurdisty has some additional concerns about some unintended consequences which may or may not be baked into the amended language. I hear, I think, some openness on the mayor's part, who is the commissioner in charge of this particular policy space, to have continuing dialogue with Commissioner Hurdisty to perhaps address her concerns. So one proposal, which I... I think we roughly have two amendments on the table. One, some amendments from Heidi, which would allow us to shift the auditor's office around. Hurdisty's put together some amendments today, too. I hope that we can move forward on the time-sensitive piece, and then if Commissioner Hurdisty and the mayor were open to having additional dialogue around other amendments that we might make to make this even... An even better ordinance, I think that would be great. But I'll leave my colleagues to decide what they want to do. I'm ready to vote today, no matter what we do.
Did you offer an amendment? I wasn't...
I didn't offer an amendment, but Heidi recommended that if I wanted to remove the section that I had the big concern with, that I could amend that section.
Could you restate, Heidi, what that section is?
So, Mayor, basically, what we would do is remove all changes other than... We would maintain the changes from references to the auditor. We would continue those, removing and change to the IPR. And we would continue the removal of the reference to citizen, changing to community members, as is done in the existing exhibit. The other changes would then be struck and would not occur until we came back and had a more thorough discussion.
I'd like to know specifically what those changes are and why they were included originally in the amendment.
All right, so the paragraph B, 1A, that was a discussion about when do you have to have a PRB hearing? If currently you have a hearing, when there's any controvert at all. It can be a controvert between sustained, not sustained, exonerated, and unfounded. And the requested change was that if the controvert is only between not sustained, exonerated, or unfounded, which are all ways of saying you are not sustaining it, that it would not go to a PRB. So we could... So there'd be... We would not have that change happen. The next change is in paragraph F of that same section.
And on the PRB item, is that related to discipline?
Yes.
And so one of the concerns that... Well, explain to me how it is related to discipline in the timeline of disciplinary proceedings.
So when the... It's related to a decision not to discipline somebody, and in all those findings... findings, not sustained, exonerated, and unfounded, there is a decision not to discipline somebody. It just has to do with whether there was a decision that there wasn't enough evidence to sustain, which is not sustained. Exonerated is that the evidence was more likely than not, that the person did not do what was alleged. And unfounded is that even what the person alleged happened as a complaint, it does not violate the City's, the P P B directive that was...
But without getting to these, this granular level of detail, under our current P R B proceedings, the disciplinary process is not over until this is completed. Is that correct?
That is correct. So, under the D O J settlement agreement...
Part of what this does is, is you get to, you're not held accountable, and now what flavor of not held accountable are you going to be held to? But again, one of the criticisms that we've had of our disciplinary process, is that it goes on, and on, and on, before we get people back on the street, particularly those who have already been found, heavy air quotes, "not guilty." This seems like a step in the right direction. I'm not prepared to concede this. What else?
The next one, Mayor, and you are correct about the timing. The D O J settlement agreement requires us to have that P R B meeting and complete it, and a recommendation to the Chief's Office within 180 days. So, that does have a timing impact.
Which we rarely, we're always scrambling. And in part, it's because we're trying to figure out what flavor of innocent.
That is correct. The next change is the one in Subparagraph F of that same section, that says, "In the event the involved member separates from employment prior to the date of the Board, the Chief would have the discretion to either direct the Board to hear the case as scheduled, or to reconvene to hear the case, and the event the involved member returns to city employment."
Why is this important?
The interest there is to just close the case out, if somebody leaves city employment, rather than going through all the steps of the process. If they're not working for us anymore, then, then it doesn't impact the city, whether we have a P R B at that time or not, have it at that time.
Okay, I'm ambivalent on that one. What else?
The next one is Paragraph B4, which referenced a manual that, from 2010. And my understanding is that it's since been updated, so it made sense to remove that reference.
And that's just cleaning up the text. That's not important. I mean, it leaves a old history that's not relevant, but it's not critical. It doesn't change policy one way or the other.
Correct.
What else?
Again, so then scrolling down, Mayor, to, sorry, I need to distract. Composition of the Board, Paragraph C, Subparagraph 1B, Advisory Members. Little A, it referenced the Office of Accountability and Professional Standards, and now that's called Professional Standards, and Division, and it referenced Manager. Now, that person's title is Commander. So, again, that was just cleanup to comport with current titles. It's, it's not, it's kind of not significant either way.
But it's, look, it's, this is code cleaning. These last two are just cleaning up the language to comport with current titles, and training, eliminate training manuals that are no longer used by the Police Bureau. I don't see why anybody would care one way or the other, if we remove those. What else?
The next one, Mayor, under Advisory Members, Paragraph 8, that was the reference to the Assistant Chiefs, that are not the Supervisor, the Involved Member, and changing that to the Bureau Equity Manager. That was a request by P P B, because the Assistant Chiefs of the not, of the Supervisor, not of the Involved Member, generally, they often are not there, and the Bureau felt the Bureau Equity Manager would be a better Advisory Member to the Board.
Commissioner Hardesty had a question on that.
Thank you. I think on this particular issue, having an Equity Advisor, as compared to a Assistant Chief, what was the Bureau's reasoning, why that would be a better oversight member than a Assistant Chief of Portland Police Bureau?
Commissioner, there, there is already an Assistant Chief present, who's in the chain of command for the Involved Member, and the Bureau felt that having an Equity Manager and bringing in Equity Lens to the P R Bs would be helpful to them.
Did you consider that the, everyone has been asking to add an additional Community Member, all the O I R group reports, as well as the COCO and the D O J. Was that part of the conversation, and instead we elected to add an Equity Manager, instead of a Community Member?
No, Commissioner, that was not part of that conversation.
That's where I have my problem, Mayor. We're not having a whole conversation. We're having pieces of conversations. Let me just go to E, Board Facilitator. When you remove "shall" and put "maybe," that sends all kind of warning signs for me, because "maybe" means that you can do basically what you want, as compared to a "shall" that directs. And again, this is a conversation I would love to have had, before I was asked to vote on this. So...
Commissioner Maps?
Colleagues, I really appreciate this dialogue. I'm ready to vote on this today, but before we do vote, I hope that we can have a little bit more dialogue. It might be helpful for me to hear Commissioner Rubio's perspective on this. I don't want to put you on the spot, but if Commissioner Rubio, if you have any thoughts on this matter, I'd be interested in hearing what you're thinking.
Thanks, Commissioner Maps. I, I'm fine with all the housekeeping items. I know that my staff work with the City Attorney's Office quite extensively on this. So, I am prepared to vote today. I do, though, you know, have some new understanding and insight from what Commissioner Hardesty has raised about particular members' recommendations to changes. So, I, I do have a concern, if we haven't had an opportunity to give real reflection on what those mean for this as well. So, I would strongly support having a second piece where we do have that, and bring forth other changes. I would definitely be willing to entertain those additional changes.
Thank you, Commissioner Rubio. That's very helpful. And I think I'm in a place fairly close to you. I'm ready to vote in favor of the housekeeping items that we have before us today. And I sure hope that the Mayor and Commissioner Hardesty can continue this conversation, and maybe, and if they should come up with a package of reforms that would make this item even better, I'd be eager and happy to consider them at some point in the future. Thank you.
Very good. So, I want to make sure I understand where you are, Commissioner Maps. You are prepared to vote for the amendment as presented by legal counsel. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay, very good. Do we have any public testimony on this item?
We have one person signed up.
Yeah, let's hear from him. Three minutes named for the record.
Dan Handelman.
Dan, we heard you for a second, then you faded out. Are you still there?
I am here. My computer was saying something else, so I'm just getting that all worked out. Okay. Good morning, Mayor Wheeler and Commissioners. My name is Dan Handelman. I use he/him pronouns. I'm with the group Portland Cop Watch. First, I want to really thank Commissioner Hardesty for giving half of my testimony. This is not the appropriate time to making any changes to the procedures of the Police Review Board, if all you're trying to do is do housekeeping. There are a lot of recommendations that have been made, as Commissioner Hardesty said, not only by the C O C L, the O I R group, and the D O J, but also by Community Members. I have pulled out and dusted off comments that Portland Cop Watch made in August 2019, the last time the change was made to this ordinance, which was to add the Citizen Review Committee members to the code, as required by the D O J agreement. And I'm not a lawyer, but I knew that this proposed amendment wasn't violation of that agreement. I'm very surprised that the City Attorney didn't realize that until this morning. There are other changes that need to be made, that CRC members have been saying for years, that they have jobs, and they can't come into the meetings, because these, they're held during the daytime. And there needs to be some changes to the procedure, to make it easier for Community Members to participate. The Compliance Officers' recommendations, that Commissioner Hardesty referenced, is that the Board has been making votes, where they consider a police officer's assignment. Like, they say, "I don't want to hold this officer accountable for use of force, because they're an enhanced crisis intervention team officer, and they'll lose that position." That's not an appropriate thing to do. If they violated policy, they violated policy. And the reason the E C I T members are banned from having use of force findings against them, is that that doesn't make them a good person to negotiate without using violence. So, these are good changes, that we support the C O C L, and need to be made. The section that is being, I'm hoping being struck, about the hearings on controverted cases, if you read it literally, if somebody challenges a sustained finding, to try to change it to one of those other three findings, the P R B will not be held, because the way it's written. So, that language is, is not really fully thought out, and I really think that, as Commissioner Hardesty said, there needs to be much more public dialogue, before any of this goes into effect. The idea of the Police Review Board Coordinator, who is a P P B employee facilitating these meetings, the CRC has said for years that the facilitators have not listened to them, and when they say, they have their opinion, the police say, "Well, you're not a police officer. You don't know." That's not appropriate, and that would only get worse, if you make it a Police Bureau employee facilitating. So, some of the ideas we put forward in 2019, and continue to put forward, and we actually put it on forward before, is to add to the code, that when the P R B asks for more investigation, the Bureau has to do that, or the I P R. The person who's harmed or is a survivor, has to be able to speak to the Board. They're not allowed to do that right now. The P R B should be open to the media and/or to the public, and the civilian members of the Board should hold public meetings twice a year, when the P R B reports are published. And you should be nominating new people to the Board in September, and this is a good time to make a change like that. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Dan. Appreciate your testimony. Any further discussion on this item? I did have one question, Heidi, based on Dan's testimony. So, the issue of facilitation is one that's interesting to me. And given the work that we do here on City Council, which is always, every issue that comes here is controversial. If it's dealing with homelessness, if it's dealing with public safety, if it's dealing with livability issues, if it's dealing with COVID, economic recovery, you name it, facilitation is key. And I have found the difference between a good outcome and a bad outcome is often good facilitation versus bad facilitation. Could you tell me a little bit about what Dan was describing, in terms of the requirement that facilitation be done by a P P B employee? Why could that not be expanded to include a contractor?
So, actually, it's the, it's the opposite way around, Mayor. So, currently, the requirement is that the facilitator is a non-city employee. And in the last, as of recent, the contract is coming due, and lately, the Bureau has had trouble finding facilitators who are willing to serve in that role as facilitator for P P B. And so, the request was that if they can't find an outside facilitator, that, that the P P B coordinator, the P R B, excuse me, coordinator, that that person be allowed to them facilitate.
Can you explain why it is difficult for the Portland Police Bureau to find an outside facilitator? My experience is those jobs are very well-paid.
Mayor, they, they are well-paid. The contract, my understanding of the contract is a, is a good-paying contract. I think that in the last two years, there's been less interest expressed back from the various groups that provide facilitation, in doing so with P P B. I don't, I have not heard any more detail than that, other than that more and more facilitators have been declining that role with, with P P B as facilitator for these Police Review Board hearings.
All right. Well, that's, that's certainly worth putting an asterisk next to and following up on, isn't it?
Yes, Mayor.
All right, thank you. I'd certainly like to hear more about that. And I'll certainly ask the Chief about it as well. All right, let's take a vote, then, please, on the amendment.
Hardesty?
What amendment?
I'm sorry. You know what? I think we have to put, I was going to put Heidi's amendment on the table. I think I have to put a different amendment on the table, don't I, to withdraw the emergency ordinance aspect of this? Do you have any objection, Heidi?
Yeah, Mayor, if, if what I could ask would be this, if for this one, if the amendments we could do today, would be that you would amend, amend the exhibit to remove any changes other than the change from Auditor to I P R, and the change from Citizen to Community Member. All other changes would be struck, and then we'll come back for a more fulsome discussion, and maybe consider additional changes. And I think that's what I understood Commissioner Hardesty was asking for, and I understood Commissioner Maps and Commissioner Rubio support that for today, and that we'll return and have a more fulsome discussion about other changes, in addition to the ones that were included.
That's fine. We've talked this thing to...
Just for clarification's sake, to clarify my position, I am ready to vote in favor of the amendments that Heidi has put on the table, and I encourage the Mayor and Commissioner Hardesty to continue their discussion around other issues. But I think that's a separate discussion for a separate day.
So, here's what we'll do. And if I'm on the prevailing side, great. If I'm not, I can live with it, move on to the rest of our agenda. Here's what I'm proposing. We will vote on the amendment as Heidi originally proposed it. Are you following me, Heidi? The original amendment?
I am. So, the original amendment was removing the, removing the, if available or otherwise drawn from the Board's list of volunteer community members. In other words, a CRC member would continue to be required for P R B use-of-force cases.
Correct. The original amendment, as you read it. Then, I will be offering an amendment to remove the emergency ordinance, because I think my colleague has been very clear that she does not intend to vote in favor of the overall ordinance, and therefore, it would be stupid for us to proceed with an emergency ordinance. So, I will also amend this to withdraw the emergency clause.
And Mayor, if I could, because these, because of the removal of I P R from the Auditor's Office, effective June 30th, that there are changes we need to have as an emergency ordinance. So, my ask would be to proceed to remove all the changes, other than the references to, from Auditor to I P R, and from Citizen to Community Member. Remove every other change at this time, pass this as an emergency ordinance, so that we have it set up how we need to, as of June 30th. And then we'll come back with the changes I've recommended, along with, I'll meet with you and Commissioner Hardesty and any other Council office that wants to meet, and we can have a discussion about the other changes. But at this point, to get those changes at least done before, by the end of the month, so that we are, our code reflects what we're actually doing, that would be my ask.
Can I take a one-minute recess, so I can discuss this with Commissioner Hardesty? Because I don't want to move forward if we don't have her vote. So, we're in recess for one minute. So, just, so we're clear, the amendment that we are voting on is not Heidi's original amendment. What we are voting on is what I will call Amendment 2, the cleaner version. And just to make sure that we're clear on that, Heidi, can you restate that amendment, and then I'm going to move it, and Commissioner Hardesty's going to second it?
So, the amendments to the existing code language in the Police Review Board section of the code would be to remove references to the auditor... of the code would be to remove references to the auditor and change those to IPR or IPR director as reflected in the proposal, and to remove references to citizen and change those to community members as reflected in Exhibit A. All other changes would be deleted.
So moved.
And would not occur.
Second.
Call the roll.
Hardesty.
Aye.
Maps.
Aye.
Rubio.
Aye.
Wheeler.
Aye. The amendment is adopted. The main motion is amended. Please call the roll.
Hardesty.
I really appreciate you, Heidi and Mayor Wheeler, for really hearing the conversation that we've had today, and I'm happy to vote aye.
Maps.
Aye.
Rubio.
I want to thank the City Attorney's Office for their work in this and in their flexibility. Also, I want to thank, you know, the IPR, all the folks connected to the IPR transition, including staff and our council staff, for all the work that went into these pieces, and look forward to seeing the progress. I vote aye.
Wheeler.
Aye. Hallelujah. The ordinance is adopted as amended. Now can we move on? Next item, please. We'll go back to the time certain. We have people waiting. I want to get to them. This is an important one. The item number four six six, please.
Twenty twenty-two Travel Portland Annual Report to City Council.
Colleagues, I'm pleased to jointly introduce this item with Commissioner Maps. As part of the city's long and productive partnership with Travel Portland, 1% of the city's transient lodging tax goes to support destination marketing and promotional programs. In addition, Portland's Tourism Improvement District collects a 3% fee on overnight stays at hotels as well as at vacation rentals. With oversight from the lodging community, local governments, and industry partners, Travel Portland invests these revenues to promote Portland as a destination, to attract visitors, to create jobs, and to boost spending at local businesses. This annual report to City Council is a requirement of the city's agreement with Travel Portland. I always look forward to hearing directly from Jeff Miller and his incredible colleagues about Travel Portland's efforts and the state of travel and tourism here in the city of Portland. With that, I'll turn it over to Commissioner Maps, who will represent the city, who represents the city on Travel Portland's Board of Directors. Commissioner Maps.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Colleagues, for the past year and a half, I've had the privilege of serving as this council's liaison to Travel Portland. That responsibility has taught me a lot about the crucial role that travel and tourism industries play in our city's economy and culture. Travel and tourism celebrate the things that we all love about Portland, and travel and tourism support about 40,000 local jobs and generate billions of dollars in spending at local businesses. And now, the bad news. Portland's travel and tourism industries have fallen on hard times. Portland's slow recovery from the pandemic kept tourists away. In addition, our city's damaged reputation kept tourists away. Now, if you go back just a couple of years and ask the average person planning a vacation or the average convention planner what comes to mind when they thought about Portland, they would have probably mentioned our great restaurants or beautiful natural areas. However, in 2021, when we asked potential visitors what came to mind when they thought about Portland, too often, the answer was homicides and homelessness. The damage done by COVID and the damage done to our reputation decimated our local hospitality industry. Travel and tourism spending in the region dropped from $5.6 billion in 2019 to $2.4 billion in 2020. That's below where tourism spending was in 2003. Here's the bottom line. Over the past two years, over $5 billion tourism and travel dollars did not get spent in our city. That's been a huge hit to our economy, and that has been a huge hit to the small businesses and BIPOC Portlanders who are on the front line of our city's hospitality industry. There is some good news, though. 2021 saw travel and tourism spending rebound to about $3.7 billion, and this council played an important role in that recovery. For example, colleagues, you might remember that one of the first things this council did in 2021 was to partner with Travel Portland and the lodging industry to increase resources going to support the hospitality industry's recovery. And I'm happy to report that those new investments have paid off. Portland's hospitality industry is recovering. Still, we have a long way to go. But as we are about to learn from Jeff Miller, Portland's Portland Portland's economic recovery is on track and picking up steam. And here to tell us more about the state of Portland's travel and tourism industries, we have Jeff Miller, President and CEO of Travel Portland. Welcome, Jeff.
Thank you so much, Commissioner Maps, Mayor Wheeler, council members. We are always excited to do our annual report, and there is good news, and we certainly like to share it. I have with me today Angela Nelson, our Vice President of Equity, Diversity, and Inclusion. You met her virtually in October when we reported to council, but I'm glad to have her here in person because Travel Portland is all about in person. Next slide. Here we go. Let's start one more slide. Okay, there's a lot of numbers on this chart, and Commissioner Maps covered most of them for me. So I will go quickly. You can see in 2012, we had 2.6 billion in spending tourism spending in the three-county region. And in 2019, our high watermark was 5.6 billion. We dropped as low as 2.1 billion, and are now coming back. Recovery is happening. You also see the metrics for earnings, jobs, and taxes fell as well. And the one place that I always like to plant our flag is we want those jobs back, and we want that hiring back. That's what tourism is to Portland. How long it takes us to get back, we are not quite sure yet, but we are going to work towards that. And I'm now going to ask Angela to report on the questions council asked before to give you our updates.
Thank you, Jeff, and good morning to all of the commissioners, Mayor Wheeler. It is good to be here in person with all of you. We're going to go ahead and jump right into the questions that you asked. First one being, what has the outreach strategy been to diverse convention interests, and what has been the result of that outreach?
And can we advance two slides?
Thank you.
One more.
All right. So Travel Portland deploys two sales managers in the effort of procuring future diverse meetings and conventions, along with our extensive program of work. In DC, we have Tracy Chapman, who oversees our citywide conventions. She's seen here in the photo with Lisa Chan from the Convention Center sales team at the at OCC. And then we also have Chanel Sharagi for supporting our self-contained hotel programs. And Travel Portland, through collaboration with local stakeholders and diverse business owners, continually work to identify opportunities to create strategic partnerships that connect Portland's diverse communities, talent, and businesses to convention hosting opportunities. And of course, I continue to ensure that we are connecting with community to create beneficial opportunities for them as well as our convention meeting groups. Next slide, please. As we say, the early bird gets the worm, but fast and thoughtful actions are essential to the success of our convention strategy. In March, our DC sales team hosted a sales mission, and this is a series of intimate, yet uniquely curated events that creatively showcase why groups should return to Portland or come here for the first time for their future meetings. And in this photo, you'll see here a representation of clients from the, oh, you've already advanced. Thank you. Here you'll see from this DC sales mission, which is a hub of many associations, where we took back in May, I'm sorry, back in March, several key Travel Portland staff members, local hotel and convention center partners, and together, we demonstrated to clients that Travel Portland is ready to welcome them back. The time was ripe, and we were excited to reconnect with them, to share how we're building back as a destination and as a city. So pictured here are clients from two different events that were held. On the left, we have meeting planners who attended the Tapestry Event, which was an evening of culture and community. We also took the opportunity to showcase our My People's Market or a representation of that to those clients. And then also on the right was a reception at Blooming's, where planners received back to the office dressing tips or style tips. Next slide, please. During the sales mission also, there was a great focus on diversity. The first image here is of myself at the Tapestry Event, sharing our commitment, Travel Portland's commitment to equity, diversity, and inclusion. The middle image highlights an event we call Stilettos in the C-Suite, which was a panel of female executives making strides in the, this was a panel that we featured a female executives making strides in the hospitality industry, and it featured our very own Vice President of Convention Sales, Desiree Everett. The discussion was very engaging and dynamic, as our panelists really discussed what it means to break barriers and blaze trails for others to follow. Next slide. Lastly, oh, I apologize. One more. Can you go back? That last photo was an invitation, was a representation of Tillamook. We invited our friends from there to join us for a Say Cheese reception, and this was just a perfect way to celebrate the return of in-person meetings, which gives us all something to certainly smile about. And the representative from Tillamook not only shared their award-winning cheese with our guests, but also their commitment to equity and inclusion. All right. Now, next slide. So Travel Portland continues in our pursuit to attract diverse group bookings, and this is translated to a successful list of future meetings and convention businesses. And to date, we have over 25,000 room nights, 15,800 convention delegates that are traveling to Portland, and approximately $16 million in estimated economic impact. This week, in fact, we have INCOR, which is the National Conference on Race and Equity, Ethnicity, I'm sorry, here in Portland for the second time within four years. Next slide. And then we also are looking to the future. And so we looked at our tentative bookings here. You'll see one of the groups listed is the Omega Sci-Fi Fraternity, which has shortlisted Portland for their Leadership Council Conference in 2025, and back in April, reconducted a site visit with their selection committee chair and members. And this was a great opportunity to connect them to community as well. And we'll talk about how we rolled out the red carpet here in a moment. But next slide. So I spoke to the fact that INCOR is in town this week, and as you know, they are a conference that has a series of meetings that, I'm sorry, they constitute the leading and most comprehensive national forum on the issue of race and ethnicity in higher education. And we're so glad that they chose to return. So we do ask our our guests, our community, if you see them on the corners around the OCC Convention Center, that you welcome them and greet them with a warm Portland smile and thank them for coming back. Next slide. My People's Market, as you all are familiar with, is one of the ways we connect to community, and we connect them to our conference groups as well. And so this partnership is very unique, and in our efforts to engage our community, I'm sorry, our conference attendees to this market, we have invited the attendees to join this week's market, which actually takes place the third through the fifth. And for those attendees that attend, they'll receive a $10 kudo credit to spend at our My People's Market and really support the vendors and food offerings that are going to be present there. So next slide. Earlier, I spoke to the fact that one of our tentative bookings was for the group Omega Sci-Fi Fraternity, and pictured here, a couple of photos during their time, they visited Abbey Creek, the PDX location downtown. And then we also have a photo of the group with members of our community, as well as Representative Janelle Bynum, who joined us, and she really knows how to sell Portland. So we are eager to have her back in the future for groups that visit with us. But I wanted to share that if this group does select our destination, that the economic impact would be great. We're talking over 1,700 room nights with the offering of self-contained options in OCC package, but also over $1 million in economic impact. So these bookings really do support our local economy. Next slide. So questions two and three. You asked, how are businesses of color being supported in, I'm sorry, one more slide over. So we combined these two questions and the responses. You asked, how are businesses of color being supported in helping bring back tourism to the city? And what are businesses, what businesses are being supported and highlighted through marketing with additional resources? And so we certainly remain committed to supporting and promoting businesses of color through our PR and our marketing efforts, which we'll demonstrate to you shortly, as well as our strategic investments and partnerships throughout the community. Next slide. Over the last few months, you'll see some photos or demonstration of media coverage, which we are incredibly proud of. Coverage like this does not happen on its own. It is a result of our PR's team proactive work and their commitment to EDI. So for the first three quarters of the fiscal year, the team has delivered over 600 media pitches, including at least one minority-owned business in each of those pitches. Next slide. We are also intentional about highlighting and amplifying BIPOC-owned businesses in their own channels. Our content strategy team is further enhancing our partnerships with black-owned creative firms, producing neighborhood guides, personality profiles, and other video assets. And we continue to work with our DEI consultant, Kathleen Holt, to evaluate and improve our content production, ensuring that we are applying DEI lens and giving people of color decision-making power at every step of the editorial process. And here, these images reflect working, our partnerships with Black Ball Films and Better Marketing, which are also BIPOC-owned businesses. Next slide. Our most recent campaign was conceived and executed by Industry, who is also a minority-owned firm, led and owned. The campaign targeted the West Coast travelers, highlighting a number of minority-owned businesses that offer up cozy winter experiences. Next slide. And here are some additional minority-owned businesses that we've promoted via our winter campaign partnerships with a digital publisher and creating and distributing fresh content about the diverse experiences that awaits our visitors to our city. Next slide, please. When it comes to strategic partnerships and engagements, our community team continues to work hard to ensure that businesses of color are supported. We hosted our first in-person networking event back in March at the Lanzun Chinese Garden. In addition, we gave strategic investment dollars to the Old Town China Business Association to produce a series of videos that celebrate the business districts and its events, including the Lunar New Year, as well as happenings that are coming up in May and June. Next slide.
One of the things I wanted to talk about, next slide, please, is our visitor-facing strategy, and there's
One more, I apologize. Two more. Go back. One more.
You can leave it there and just go ahead.
Okay. So just lastly, as I wrap up, we've continued our partnerships with Mercatus, promoting them in our industry newsletter and attending the Mercatus Momentous Event that took place in April. And we just continue to support Portland's food cart scene, sponsorship of our Food Cart -- Food Cart Week brought to, which brought, I'm sorry, and sponsorship of Food Cart Week and ongoing outreach of other local programs and events that support the tourism economy. Thank you. I'll turn it back over to Jeff.
Thanks, Angela. One of the things I wanted to talk about, next slide, please, is our visitor-facing strategy. And there's been a lot of conversation about when we will open a brick-and-mortar visitor center again. And we're not quite ready to do that, but we hope to have that done by early spring, late spring, early summer next year. However, we do have several strategies that we are employing, short and long term. Next slide. We will again partner with Portland's Clean and Safe Sidewalk Ambassadors. And with our financial contribution, we will be able to have them over at the Convention Center when conventions are in town, providing the information that they need. They usually stay in their AAD area, but our investment helps with that. We are distributing a map with QR code that will direct any visitor to the information they need and a near-me-now on our, on our app so that people can find out what is close to them. And under the heading of Things That You Don't Think You Need to Worry About, But You Do, we are investing with Pioneer Courthouse Square for the year to pay for weekend staffing to keep the bathrooms open. There is no place in downtown, no easy place in downtown Portland for our tour operators to take their guests. So we are investing in bathrooms. There you go. There's a visitor information brochure rack at the exhibit of the Museum of World Athletics, which is at Pioneer Place, which is for Oregon '22. We are hiring a dedicated visitor support representative who will answer those questions via online and phone. And we're partnering with the Pacific Northwest Experience for frontline training for hospitality this year. Next slide. Question four, who is benefiting from the new 1%? Is it Central City Hotels or others? Next slide. These are the new numbers that we are getting from the Revenue Bureau. And you can see that the majority of the lodging tax comes out of the Central City. And at that 56%, it's the largest percentage, but that percentage will increase even more as the Central City comes back. The rest of the city has done pretty well. The other number that I will point out to you is the short-term rental number is as big as the airport tax collections. So with that, we have added a second representative from the short-term rental industry to our board to make sure that this very important segment is represented and that we are promoting them as well. Next slide. With staff layoffs, has this 1% allowed staff to be rehired and what's the demographic breakdown? Next slide. I presented this slide before, and you'll see in October '21, sort of where we were prior to COVID. And the top boxes are on gender. You can see we're similar to where we were there. And in the bottom boxes, the diverse employee statistics have changed from 19% multicultural prior to COVID to 29% now. So we have been very intentional about our hiring and will continue to be. Next slide. I'll now talk about destination data, which is where you really do see the statistics around recovery. Next slide. You can see that this is the 1% lodging tax change over many, many years. After 9/11, we had a relatively slow recovery, but we did recover. After the 2008 recession, we had a rocket ship recovery with a couple of years of more than 20% growth. And then we, I hate to use the word unprecedented, but we had unprecedented drop, that 79%. And I don't ever want to hear the word pivot again, so please don't say it. And that 110% change is welcome. Next slide. But we have to temper that with the actual dollar amounts. Because while, while that percentage increase is large, the dollar amounts are smaller. And you can see we had as low as $1.7 million in that 1%. And we expect to be back to full amount at, in 2024, 2025.
Commissioner Hardesty.
Thank you, Mayor. I apologize, Jeff. I wanted, I was gonna let you guys finish your presentation, but you got me with the, though the taxes is covering more, the income coming in is less. Was that accurate?
This year, the tax increase is going up. However, the Dean Runyon is for the year prior. So it's, it's a historical look, and this is an immediate look. So we expect the Dean Runyon numbers and the employment to be much, much better next year when we report back.
Thank you. I keep on, you guys on the walls. I don't, I'll have something to say when you're done, but I didn't want to miss that piece. Thank you.
Yep. And as I said, we, we hope to be back to the 2019 levels of tax collections by 2024, potentially 2025. We're hedging our bets a little bit there. We've been stung before. Next slide. This is a graphic representation of how bad it was. The purple line is at the top, and that was the peak of 2019. The yellow line at the bottom was the depths of the pandemic. You can see last year, the red line was better, and we are seeing more recovery in this current year, this current calendar year. Next slide. What's really nice to see here, it's the same, same color of slides, but you can see in this year, the average daily rate charged by hotels is almost approached what it was before. And that's a very positive sign that the hotels are not dropping rate, even though the occupancies aren't there, but that the consumer is also willing to pay, pay the rate. Next slide. This is the revenue. You can see again, the same charts, and revenue is coming back. We are still significantly below where we were in revenue in 2019 because of the lack of rooms sold and the lower ADR before. But recovery is indeed happening, and we're excited about that. Next slide. And this shows you the Central City Hotel revenue, which was at a peak of $451 million in 2019, and then dropped all the way to 107 million and has now bounced back up to 180. So we have a very long way to go before the Central City is back. And the Central City Hotels rely on business travel conventions, and that's been slower to recover than leisure has, which is why these statistics are so much less. Next slide. Also during the pandemic, many, many hotels closed for extended periods of time. And you can see, we were, in June of 2020, we had a low of 5,761 rooms open in the Central City. That is a stunning number. We have come back, and we now, those, a few hotels opened during the pandemic, and we're now with over 10,000 rooms available in the Central City of Portland. So that's, that's good for the recovery, and will make a big difference. Next slide. Short-term rentals, like everything else, did drop off, but not as much as hotels. Visitors decided, travelers decided that they wanted to be in a place where they were the only one there, short-term rental versus a hotel. And a lot of those, those changes that we'll see, there were a couple of things that we believe happened. Because the housing market was so hot, some of the rentals that were Airbnb's were sold. And we know that some hosts temporarily, temporarily pulled their properties off the rental list, but that is coming back as well. One thing before we go to the next set of data, I will say that we are incredibly excited to have the international flight, direct flights coming back. Delta to Amsterdam, Condor to Frankfurt. We have British Airways to London, which was supposed to start at the pandemic and is now starting this week. There's a reception tonight. We are hoping to work with the Biden administration. The United States is one of the few countries that still has COVID testing before you can come back. And those travelers are, those European travelers are worried about that COVID test, and it has not proven to be really effective in stopping the spread. So, but we are excited about international travel coming back. Next slide. Consumer sentiment, something that I spoke about last time. These numbers, this really gives you the mindset of how travelers think about Portland, and something that we're very interested in. This most recent wave of quarterly survey results was fielded in April by Engine Insights. It's a national sample of over 1,200 Americans that mirrors the national demographics of the United States. Respondents include both travelers and non-travelers, people who've been to Portland and those who haven't. And because the majority of our visitors come from the West, we double sample those living in the West. We did not conduct the survey in Q2 or Q3 of 2020 due to our budget constraints. Next slide. The tone of the media coverage has improved. Yay! We're very excited about that. You can see that the positive line is up above the negative line, and the neutral line has remained very good there. So certainly significant change there. Next slide. We've also, this slide really says, has, does the media coverage with, that you've seen or heard, does it make it more or less likely for you to visit Portland? And it is so encouraging to see the green line move up above the red line significantly and the neutral line staying very high. So we are almost to recovery there and what that media coverage does. Next slide. And this is some of the media coverage. I don't know if you know the show Somebody Feed Phil on Netflix. It's one of the most popular, it is their most popular food show. He was a producer on Everybody Loves Raymond and is quite hysterical, frankly. This, our PR team did an amazing job of securing Phil to come to Portland and film an episode here, which is now airing. And we worked with our regional partners. He goes out to Jacob's and Salt. But it's really about street food. And his comment is that we, Portland competes with every great street food city in the world, in Thailand, you know, around the world. And it's, it's really, you'll have to watch it, it's really terrific. We know from our, our research that culinary drives visitation to Portland. So having this kind of promotion of our culinary scene, and especially a food cart scene, really will make a difference in how travelers come. So I wanted to relate this to the past two slides, that that positive media coverage is what other people say about us, not what we say about ourselves. Next slide. How appealing is Portland as a tourist, as a vacation destination? You can see, we're back up to 44%. The neutral is back up as well. So we are feeling very positive about that. Next slide. One of the things that consumers really want to know is it a welcoming and safe destination. And we took our hits. Portland really had some, some issues with our reputation, but that is coming back as well. We have a waste, a way to go, but we all, all, and you, continue to work on that, changing that. Next slide. And this is the one that I like to hang my hat on because it's, visitors who have been to Portland, are you likely to visit again? I think that's a real, a real statistic that we need to keep looking at. And you can see, we were back up to 74, we're at 68, but that is trending in the right direction as well. And I'm excited to see that. We have tried to be so very data-driven in everything we do as we try and promote Portland as a destination. And this kind of information is not only good for us, it's good for the city, it's good for other partners to see what people are thinking of Portland. Next slide. And lastly, I always hear from people, "What more can we do?" And this is a copy of our, what we call the Good News Newsletter. And I send this to your offices personally, but it also comes out quarterly, or monthly from our team in the industry newsletter. And, you know, people lost pride in the city, but this letter is intended to share with all of our visitors, or all of our locals, to get that pride back, what great news stories have been told about Portland. And it's a listing of those, and you can go and read the stories. They're not only things that our PR team worked on, but that other good stories that have been written about Portland. And it really is good to see the recognition for small businesses throughout the city and that there is good news out there. I would encourage you to share it with everyone on your teams and with your networks because good news is happening in Portland, and we are incredibly excited to tell the story. And with that, thank you very much. Last slide.
Thank you. Great report. Colleagues, any questions?
Mayor.
Commissioner Hardesty.
Thank you. Jeff, I just want to tell you just how impressed I am with your, your, your attention to detail, right? And 2019, when I first got here, we had a, a hard conversation. And I cannot tell you how proud I am to know that because of that conversation, and maybe not just because of that conversation, but because of many conversations from before and after, that the intentionality that you've shown with Travel Portland is really, really impressive. I wish I could bottle it and give it to a whole bunch of other corporations who just can't figure out how to do it in a way that is intentional and transparent and, 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 should I say the word, equitable, right? You have actually done exactly what you've told me you're gonna do. And I'm, I'm sorry, I just went a little brain-dead. Please tell me your name again.
Angela.
Angela, you also have been a strong addition to this team. And I was cracking up when you went through the list of conventions that are coming because, talk about, Jeff just doesn't give up. I see the NAACP National on your list again. And all I want to say is bless your heart that you actually are taking on that task once again. In all seriousness, this city thrives when we actually engage and embrace the diversity and equity that is built into who we are. We know this city has a lot of talent that a lot of people never get the opportunity to see. And I am really grateful for the work that you do to intentionally make sure that there's opportunities for small business owners led by Black, Indigenous, and other people of color communities. And I will say that, you know, it's a, it's a focus that you have actually taken to your heart. And I want both of you to know that it is not unnoticed, it is not unappreciated. And, and again, we can do better, right? I did have questions, though, about, it's fabulous to have all the hotel stays, but is there a concern about staffing, both in restaurants and hotel, cleaning staff than other people who work in hotels, right? So how is that going? What's the other side of that, right? It's great that some people get to travel, but what's the other side of the people who live here and work in those environments?
I think in, like in every industry right now, talent is hard to find. The hotel industry is certainly part of that. And I would say what I hear from our hotels is the restaurant workers are the hardest ones to find. And I, it's not for lack of them paying higher, much higher wages than they've ever paid. So one of the things that Angela worked on in her previous job and is part of, will be part of her portfolio is workforce development. She's meeting with Portland Means Progress, which we were a founding member of, and talking about how we can connect our tourism and hospitality partners to those people looking for jobs and training programs and working with the Restaurant and Lodging Association. So Angela's taking that on, and she's had much success in her last, her last post, and I, I hope she brings the same.
Absolutely.
I, I am really curious to figure out how we can help with that because I know the two biggest costs, childcare and transportation. What makes people make a decision like, I can't afford to work and pay childcare, can't afford to work in, rent an apartment in the city of Portland, right? So I, I hope that collectively, we figured that out. Because I, I actually think there needs to be not just a Travel Portland or not just a city of Portland, but there needs to be really a community effort about how we make sure that we'll be moving barriers so that people can get to living wage, family wage jobs. So I, I digress. Let me just say again, great work. And I'm very appreciative of the great work that you continue to do. And don't hesitate to reach out to my office if in any way we can be helpful. And I will end by saying that Commissioner Rubio and I had the chance to type a message for the CORA Conference. And it was really wonderful to know that I was there, Donna Walkum, a couple of years ago. And I just felt so thrilled that they decided they wanted to come back to Portland because of how we made them feel the first time they were here. So again, thank you so much for your good work.
And thank you for your recording. Those mean a lot to the, the attendees.
Thank you, Commissioner Hardesty. Commissioner Rubio, then Commissioner Maps.
Thank you. I just want to really congratulate you. It's really inspiring to see your presentation. The data was very compelling, and it's very evident how much work you've put into this. And it's been a slog, you know, the past few years, but very well done. And I just have just deep appreciation to give to both of you. It's very evident in who you've recruited and who's here in our city right now. We can see, you can see our guests walking around the street corners. It feels really good to see that. I also, my colleague just mentioned it, but I also want to just reiterate it. What can we do to support you in this? That list was very impressive of all the national organizations that you're, that are on, on cue or like in the queue for you to recruit. How can we be helpful in that? I saw Naleo in there. I'm a member of Naleo, so if I can be very, any helpful in that at all. It's, it's very meaningful, not only just to the city, but even to the communities that these, these, that these conferences represent here locally, to see themselves affirmed in these, these organizations as well. So again, I just want to say, congratulations. How can we help? What can we do? And thanks for all your work.
We will tap you, trust me.
Thank you. Commissioner Maps.
Thank you, Jeff and Angela, for that clear and compelling presentation. It's wonderful to have a check-in on travel and tourism and see some good news. I do want to, I'm gonna ask you a question, which, to be transparent, you dealt with clearly clearly in your report, but I think it's worth underscoring. Jeff or Angela, can you remind this council when you expect the travel and tourism industry to be back to where we were pre-pandemic? How many more years do we got before we break, we're back above water?
We, we believe that it will be 2024 and calendar year. You know, our fiscal year is 2324, so we're hedging our bets a little bit, but by '24, we should be back fully, barring any unforeseen viruses.
Okay. So, well, I'm, I'm glad that we're getting close to the end, but also for everyone listening at home, I'll just want to emphasize the, the enormous hit that's been taken by the travel and tourism industry, basically 2019 to 2025 for sort of lost years for those of us who work and depend upon the hospitality industry. I really want to thank Jeff and Travel Portland and Angela for everything they've done to help this important community come back. And certainly I, and I suspect everyone else on council, looks forward to partnering with you in the future to make sure that we keep this recovery on track. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Maps. Kealan, did we have any public testimony on this report?
No one signed up.
Very good. Please call the roll.
Did you want to make a motion to?
I'm sorry, yes, I'll, I'll make a motion to accept the Travel Portland 2021-22 report.
A second?
Second from Commissioner Hurdisty. Please call the roll.
Hurdisty.
Again, I just want to thank you so much for the detailed report back. And like Commissioner Rubio, let me know if you want my help again with the NAACP at the national level. It's always fun to try to bring people to Portland to appreciate the beauty and the opportunities here. So I'm very happy to vote aye.
Maps.
I want to thank Jeff and Angela for that report. I also want to take a moment before we close out on this topic today to praise Travel Portland for a job well done. For example, I really appreciate the thoughtful and equitable way Travel Portland has deployed Tourism Improvement District funds. I also want to acknowledge Travel Portland's clear and direct responses to the questions this council raised about how equity concerns would shape tourism improvement district spending. It's clear to me, and I think it's clear to everyone else on this council, that Travel Portland has been a full partner in furthering this council's efforts to advance diversity, equity, and inclusion in Portland's hospitality industry. Finally, I want to praise Travel Portland for the leadership role they played in helping our hospitality industry recover from the COVID recession. I could sum all that up by saying Travel Portland, Jeff, Angela, just well done. Thank you so much. And welcome to Angela, who's still a relatively new Portlander. We're so glad to have you here. For these reasons and more, I'm happy to accept this report. Thank you.
Rubio.
I just want to, again, thank Jeff and Angela. This was incredible report. It's very heartening. We knew Portland was coming back, but this was the great validation that, that it's happening, and, and all our friends and supporters and everyone around the world can see that. So congratulations on everything. We want to be helpful, and I'm happy to vote aye.
Meiler.
So I always appreciate these reports. Jeff and Angela, thank you both for being here and sticking with it through the darkest of times. And it's pretty obvious that we are through the worst part of this economic and social upheaval that we've been through in recent years in this city. It is clear that people want to come here. They want to travel here. They want to be part of what's going on. I will also just put a few cautionary points forward. First of all, as Commissioner Hurdisty, I think correctly indicated, there are structural changes to our economy that we're not going to be able to fix at the local level. And one of those changes is convention business. I'm very eager to see what happens with convention business. I think the large ones will still happen. My question is, will the medium and the small ones still happen and at the same rate? And that's, of course, the center of target for the type of business that we try to attract here to the city of Portland. So it'll be interesting to see how that evolves in the coming years. The second thing that really stands out from your report is that when people come to Portland, they like it. They've certainly all heard the negativity, and I'm proud of this council for never buying into it. We understood that we had problems. We continue to have problems, and we continue to do what we can to address them at the local level with the resources we have. But we never bought into the theory that Portland was finished, or Portland was done, or Portland was dying. And now we have objective proof to the contrary. Our optimism has been validated, and so is yours. And I want to appreciate it. Angela, I'm getting to know you, and I very, very much appreciate the, the focus that you're bringing to Travel Portland. Jeff, I've known you for a long time, and you never gave up hope. You never gave up. And that, to me, is probably the defining characteristic of a great leader during the times that we have been through of late. So thank you for continuing that. The second area that concerns me is air travel. It appears that the airline industry is in disarray. And I hope I am exaggerating, but it looks pretty rough right now. And it's not because there aren't good people in that industry, it's because everybody wants to travel all at once after being bottled up for a couple of years, and they're having the same employment issues that every other industry is having for flight attendants, for maintenance workers, for pilots, just across the board. And demand is picking up in other parts of the world that historically didn't have as much travel and tourism, and now they're starting to enjoy some of the growth that we enjoyed years and years and years ago. So there's going to be competition for those assets, both at the local level, the national level, as well as, I would argue, globally. So it'll be interesting as we go forward to next year's report to see whether or not we were actually able to meet the demand that there was to, to come to, not only to Portland, but other cities all around the world. I'll be curious to see how that unfolds. Any rate, long story short, thanks for your great work. I vote aye. The report is accepted, and we'll see you very soon. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Next item. We'll take after a short break. Our closed captioners have done a fantastic job. They've been typing pretty hard today. Let's give them a 10-minute break. We will recess until 11:30-ish. We're in recess.
Recording stopped.
Kealan, could you please read items 467, 468, and 469 together, time certain?
Item 467, authorize intergovernmental agreement between Prosper Portland and Portland Bureau of Transportation to design and construct the Northwest Johnson, Northwest Kearney, and Northwest Park Avenue sidewalk street stormwater sanitary sewer and water main improvements and necessary off-site traffic mitigation improvements to facilitate future development of the Broadway Corridor. 468, authorize intergovernmental agreement between Prosper Portland, the Bureau of Environmental Services, and the Water Bureau to design and construct off-site water sanitary and stormwater system improvements to facilitate the future development of the Broadway Corridor. And 469, authorize intergovernmental agreement between Prosper Portland, Portland Bureau of Transportation, and Portland Parks and Recreation to design and construct the Broadway Corridor Park and Green Loop Projects improvements to facilitate the future development of the Broadway Corridor.
Thanks, Kealan. I'm pleased to introduce these next three items together. They are all non-emergency ordinances. They will authorize three intergovernmental agreements to further public infrastructure necessary for the development of the Broadway Corridor. These IGAs outline the funding, roles, and responsibilities for the design and construction of new streets, water, sanitary, and stormwater system improvements, a new park, an extension of the Green Loop. Collectively, these investments will help to unlock up to 4 million square feet of mixed-use and mixed-income development, including an affordable housing development in the first phase led by the Portland Housing Bureau. Redevelopment of the 14-acre former U.S. Postal Service property at the heart of the Broadway Corridor District has long been a stated priority for the city of Portland. And as the IGAs presented today touch bureaus within the portfolios of every member of this council, including PBOT, Parks, BES, Water, PHB, and Prosper Portland. Development of the former USPS property represents one of Portland's most significant prospects to further an equitable economy by advancing wealth-creation opportunities through construction, development, and tenancy, creating a vibrant and welcoming mixed-income neighborhood right in the center of our city, as well as supporting living-wage jobs. Today, we have Kimberly Branham and Sarah Harple from Prosper Portland to share more details about each of these three items. And before we jump into that, I just want to acknowledge the leadership of Kimberly Branham, in particular, on this project over a period of many, many years. And just as I complimented Jeff earlier on his leadership around travel and tourism through very, very difficult times, Kimberly has led our Economic Development Agency through probably the toughest and sharpest economic downturn in our city's history. And she has never lost sight of the vision around Broadway Corridor. So Kimberly, I just want to publicly acknowledge the great leadership that you've brought to this, the vision that you have prescribed, one that I wholeheartedly embrace as the mayor of this city. And I want to thank you not only for being here today to walk us through these three IGAs, but also just to thank you for your great leadership.
Thank you so much, Mayor. Good afternoon, Commissioners. It's great to be with you all today. I am joined by the senior project manager and extraordinary leader that holds everything together for Broadway Corridor, Sarah Harple. Today's presentation and actions follow City Council's approval in September of 2020 for the Funding and Finance Plan, which directed preparation of the intergovernmental agreements, including the three before you today. We're pleased to be back with you to seek your approval of these intergovernmental agreements, which are essential to moving forward the development of Broadway Corridor. Next slide, please. So this morning, Sarah and I are going to provide an overview of the Broadway Corridor project, put the agreements in context, review each agreement, and then speak to the next steps in the overall project. And while the two of us are doing the presenting this morning, there is a really mighty team of colleagues with us today. And behind the agreements in front of you, they're available to answer questions, and they've been instrumental in developing and refining the agreements that you're considering today. So in particular, we want to recognize the contributions and the leadership of Steve Siggeti, Dan Layden, and Chris Warner at PBOT, Ross Swanson, Gary Dotka, Dave Obern, and Adina Long at Parks, Rhonda Fast, and Don Uchiyama at Bureau of Environmental Services, and Jody Inman, Kevin Larson, and Gabe Solmer at the Water Bureau. And last, but certainly not least, thank you to all the attorneys for drafting and finalizing the agreements before you. There are a lot. So Eric Schaafner, Wendy Hain, Linda Law, Lindley Reese, Mac Mahoney, Tiffany Johnson, Hevner, Nancy Killinger, and Hope Whitney. We really appreciate it. Pictured on the map is a site, is a slide of a map of Broadway Corridor in context, highlighting some of the key amenities from Union Station to the continuation of North Park Blocks, the Green Loop, and the Light Rail Line. Next slide, please. So when we're talking about Broadway Corridor, we're talking about the 34-acre district in green on this slide that includes the 14-acre USPS site, which, as you'll recall, is jointly owned by the Portland Housing Bureau and Prosper Portland, as well as the Prosper Portland-owned development opportunities at Block R and at the Broadway Bridge Site, which is where the Oregon Harbor of Hope is currently located. It also includes Union Station, which is owned by Prosper Portland, the former Greyhound Bus Terminal, PNCA, and the adjacent Future Park owned by Portland Parks and Recreation that you see there next to PNCA. So there's a lot of development potential. It's in the heart of our city, and we're going to do our best to differentiate between Broadway Corridor, which is the entirety of what you see here in green, and the USPS site when we're referencing different agreements that have relevance to those different geographies. Next slide, please. The Post Office provides us with an opportunity to reimagine a central portion of the Broadway Corridor into a 21st-century center of commerce as a welcoming place for New Portlanders and those whose families and communities have long ties to the district. Connecting the Pearl and Old Town Chinatown, development of the USPS property could house between 1,800 to 2,400 new households and support between 4 and 8,800 jobs. This reflects approximately 10% of the jobs and residents projected to be added to the central city by 2035. If this growth needed to be absorbed into other locations in our region, it could take 400 acres of land and hundreds of millions of dollars of infrastructure investments to serve the same number of jobs and families with greater climate and transportation impacts for our region. Pictured here is a visualization of Northwest Johnson looking east with a view of Union Station and a vibrant commercial main street. Next slide, please. So as Mayor Wheeler mentioned, redeveloping the Post Office has long been a goal of the city of Portland, going back to at least the 1988 Central City Plan. In the Central City 2035 Plan, the site was identified as perhaps the most significant opportunity within Portland's central city. In October of 2015, City Council approved the Broadway Corridor Framework Plan, authorized a line of credit for up to $40 million to acquire the site, and established high-level expectations for the site, including that 30% of the residential units would be affordable. In partnership with the Portland Housing Bureau, Prosper Portland then acquired the site in 2016 for an acquisition price of $88 million, which was used by the Post Office for relocation to the Colwood Industrial Park where they are today. With the aim of applying lessons learned from our past large-scale public-private partnerships and ensuring that equity and inclusion were at the core of this development planning process, we convened the Broadway Corridor Steering Committee. Comprised of 37 people representing a diversity of community, private, and nonprofit organizations, geographies, and lived experiences, the Steering Committee advised on goals for the project, including the selection of the development partner, the physical concept for the site, and priorities for mix-of-uses, equitable engagement, and community benefits. Alongside the Steering Committee process, we sought to engage a diversity of community members in a meaningful way. Through town hall meetings, pop-up events, online forums, and focus groups, more than 1,000 people provided meaningful input with a disproportionately high participation from people of color. Through this engagement, we heard a number of specific recommendations, which the Steering Committee and our consultants helped us digest and informed our plans in the subsequent agreements, including the adopted master plan in 2020, the Funding and Finance Plan, and Community Benefit Agreement Term Sheet. Next slide, please. With a vision so large, we know that there's no one entity that can bring it to life. The IGAs before you today represent an important component of a series of partnerships that will be essential in bringing this vision to life over the next 20 years. Design Commission approved the USPS Master Plan in August of 2020, which establishes the infrastructure standards and building envelopes within which development can occur. City Council then approved the Funding and Finance Plans in September of 2020, which included an investment strategy that articulated Infrastructure Bureau investments, the creation of a local improvement district, and the restructuring of our line of credit. It also included the Community Benefit Agreement Term Sheet between Prosper Portland, the Portland Housing Bureau, and Healthy Communities Coalition, which Continuum had been a party to, the negotiations of, which includes application of the city's CBA policy and community benefit expectations attached to future affordable housing and the infrastructure. Prosper Portland and the city are honoring the spirit of the Community Benefit Agreement negotiations by aggregating the public investments across the projects and applying the city's CBA to the site prep work led by Prosper Portland and the proposed infrastructure projects contemplated by the IGAs. Council also approved a Development and Disposition Agreement Term Sheet between Prosper Portland and Continuum Partners outlining the terms and conditions for property transactions and development on a portion of the site. With the departure of Continuum Partners as the developer for the site, Prosper is evaluating how to best move forward with seeking one or more development partners and re-engaging in the negotiations for both of the development agreements and finalizing the Community Benefit Agreement for the vertical development. Next slide, please. As a true public-private-community partnership, we'll need a diversity of public and private resources to deliver on the site preparation, especially for the extraordinary investments that make this site unique and are beyond the capacity of any one project to carry. The city's investments of approximately $33.5 million outlined in the intergovernmental agreements today will leverage approximately $1.6 billion in outside capital to deliver on this project over the next 15 to 20 years and return nearly $100 million in direct revenue to the city. Next slide, please. The critical steps that must be taken on the path toward development of Phase 1 of the Broadway Corridor, which includes affordable housing and private commercial development, includes demolition of the main USPS facility and remediation of environmental contamination at the site, and then the subsequent construction of Northwest Johnson, Northwest Kearney, and the off-site utilities, which are necessary to service the district and vertical development. We are hopeful, and we believe that the timing of the infrastructure investments and the site preparation with first phase of development starting in 2025 is really well-timed with the rebound of the office market, and we anticipate securing new development partners in the coming year to refine the development plans. Next slide, please. So one of the questions that we've heard as we've briefed your offices as part of this conversation is why should these infrastructure projects be moving forward now and without an identified development partner? So before I turn it over to Sarah, I really want to talk through the four key reasons that we believe that these agreements and the related actions are both timely and relevant. The first is that the adopted master plan defines the required infrastructure necessary for any development to occur. This means that development at this site, whether it's an affordable housing project by a nonprofit or a private commercial development, will require these improvements regardless of what is being built. So these investments are evergreen in nature. If we delay investments in the infrastructure, we delay development and the related equitable community benefits. Timeliness is especially relevant, given the metro housing bond resources identified for Phase 1 of the affordable housing. And timely delivery of infrastructure was a major area of risk that was identified in our negotiations with Continuum and would be an issue with any future partner. So having certainty on critical infrastructure reduces the complexity of those future negotiations and risk on both sides. The third is that while current economic conditions are challenging, leading with the required infrastructure means that we might be and hope to be well-timed with economic recovery prior to the first land sale once infrastructure is complete. If we were to delay infrastructure until the market rebounded, we could be at a disadvantage in terms of being able to capture that interest. And finally, any delay will only further increase costs and risk to Prosper Portland and the city of Portland, impacting Prosper's ability to repay the line of credit, our holding costs, which are significant, and risking further inflation on streets and open space. So with that, I will turn it over to Sarah Harple.
Thank you. I'm Sarah Harple with Prosper Portland. I first want to start by echoing the appreciations that Kimberly opened with. Often, Prosper is the face of this project, but it truly is a cross-bureau effort to carry out the city's vision and directives. So whether you choose a sports analogy or a music analogy, we all need the players working together and playing to their strengths and their individual roles, and we've really benefited from that here. So I just want to personally appreciate the core team who's been with us for several years for showing up for tough conversations, very technical conversations, all with humor, respect, and expertise. So thank you. As Kimberly mentioned, the master plan governing the site was initiated in June of 2018, and this effort included extensive engagement of our public partners, community stakeholders, consultants, and advisors. It was the first Central City Master Plan to be approved under the new code and was subject to a Type 3 land use approval, which we received from the Design Commission in August of 2020. The master plan sets forth the urban design, public infrastructure, and phasing necessary to support the 4 million square feet of mixed-income and mixed-use development anticipated for the site. And I'm excited because the IGAs before you today move forward with the implementation of this master plan, from this planning agreement to really outlining roles and responsibilities for the construction of the critical public infrastructure that we have collectively prescribed in the master plan. The site preparation work underway by Prosper Portland in the initial phases of infrastructure within the IGAs are the critical path to development. So I'm going to walk you through just a quick animation that highlights kind of the importance and phasing of this work. We have relocated the Post Office operations either onsite or elsewhere and are in the process of demolishing the facilities and conducting hotspot soils remediation. This allows for the extension, excuse me, of Northwest Kearney and Northwest Johnson across the site. That work is contemplated in the Streets IGA before you, as well as the Offsite Utility work by BES and the Water Bureau contemplated in the Utilities IGA. Collectively, this Phase 0 body of work will be completed by 2025, which then unlocks approximately 70% of the site's development potential. This includes an initial affordable housing project on Parcel 4A shown here, which we anticipate will accommodate approximately 250 units serving Portlanders earning up to 60% of area median income. With this development, we can also complete a final relocation of the Post Office retail to the northeast portion of the site in a building tucked under the Greenman Plaza. This allows for the demolition of the existing parking structure and allows for the extension of Park Avenue in the Streets IGA, the extension, or the construction of the Central Park area and completion of the Green Loop, which is contemplated in the Open Space IGA before you. This also unlocks the remaining parcels of development, including a second affordable housing project. The three IGAs, there are three IGAs before you today, each to be approved separately, and I'm going to provide a very high-level summary of each. The first, I should also note, as Kimberly said, we are aggregating the public investment across all of the IGAs, and so each is subject to the application of the city's CBA or the current comparable policy. The first IGA is, the Streets IGA is an agreement between the Bureau of Transportation and Prosper Portland. It includes two phases of work, that first extension of Northwest Johnson and Northwest Kearney, with a follow-on completion of Park Avenue and some additional traffic mitigation efforts. This work is funded by a combination of PBOT system development charge resources and a local improvement district, which was approved by City Council in October of 2020. However, Prosper Portland, the Bureau of Transportation, and the Portland Housing Bureau have collectively submitted an application for a raised grant funds that, if successful, will help reduce those contributions. We will be coming back to you when we hear the outcome of that application. We applied for $15 million, and awards will be announced in August. With that information in hand, we can revisit the funding strategy for this body of work, including potentially grant funds, changes in interest fees, as well as the most current construction estimates that we have at the time. And the IGA also delineates responsibilities for cost overruns, whether it's a proportional split due to construction cost increases or if there are cost increases that are directly attributable to environmental financing costs, and those can be borne by the LID parties or by Prosper Portland. The second IGA, I should also mention, sorry, I should also mention that this work is currently at about 60% design. We've been closely coordinating between the Bureau of Transportation and with Prosper's demolition work so that they are prepared to follow immediately on the heels, and we have well-coordinated assumptions in the way that we are leaving the site and then their continued on work.
Sarah, one moment. Commissioner Hardesty has a question on this.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Sarah. So I'm curious as to why we have this IGA in front of us when we don't know if we've received a raised grant? That would have a significant impact on a financial impact to the city of Portland.
Certainly. So the work is underway. As I mentioned, the Bureau of Transportation is already at a 60% design, and so they have been working kind of in good faith to implement a significant portion of the body of work. We also have heard, as Kimberly mentioned, that the importance of the certainty of this work moving forward has been critical to any interest by potential development partners. So the IGA set before you is kind of a, is consistent with the Funding and Finance Plan that was previously approved, and so in some ways, it's a worst-case scenario barring, you know, changes in construction estimates, but we know we at least have the resources to move forward, and then if successful with the raised grant, then we can modify those, but this at least gives us a foundation to keep this work progressing.
So Sarah, as I think about all the major transportation opportunities coming down the pike in the next few years, where does this fit in the priority? I mean, what you're saying is the work is 60% done. That can be, because we haven't actually moved any dirt yet. So we may have been 60% in thinking about what it could look like, but we're certainly not 60% of the way there yet. So how does this prioritize of all the other transportation priorities and the very limited resources that the Portland Bureau of Transportation has?
And so just to clarify, we're at the 60% of the design phase. So you're correct, we have not yet moved dirt, but they will be prepared to on the heels. We have representatives of the Bureau of Transportation with us today who could speak to the We have representatives of the Bureau of Transportation with us today who could speak to the priorities of this within the body of work. And certainly, we have I think we've heard today kind of the importance of the project as a whole, but they can speak to the prioritization within their portfolio.
Thank you for that, Sarah. But as I think about the Rose Quarter project, as I think about the I-5 Bridge project, as I think about 82nd Avenue project, there's a lot of transportation infrastructure improvement that we are actually responsible for. And again, you're asking me to support an IGA that commits my bureau to prioritizing this. And that's why I'm asking, where does this fit on? I know where it would fit on my priority list, but if I approve this IGA, am I committing my bureau to actually prioritizing this over like 82nd Avenue?
Commissioner, I want to make sure. Oh, is Steve there? Yeah.
Yeah, if for what it's worth, if now's the right time.
Commissioner, please.
Steve Siggeti here, Capital Delivery Division Manager at PBOT. Thank you for those questions, Commissioner. What I'll add is that our bureau's contribution with even without the federal grant is currently for this IGA 4.6 million. And the LID, the Local Improvement District, is 23. So we're pretty well leveraged with the local improvement district that would be ultimately paid by the private development. So we are feeling comfortable with this current agreement, and then it gets even better if we get the federal grants. And thanks to our resourcing and staffing, we're able to move forward with all those important priorities you mentioned in other parts of the city.
Thank you for that, Steve. That helps. Can you tell me, so what happens if we don't sell this property to a private developer? Does that mean that the city is on a hook to pay that all the individual city bureaus on a hook to pay back these LIDs?
And there is a risk that Prosper Portland would be responsible for paying a portion of the LID fees. Because this is two phases of work, those payments do not come due until the Park Avenue is completed, which currently is scheduled for 2032. So in our funding models, we have a stress test on the pace of disposition and the amount of potential LIDs that we may need to absorb. So we have accounted for that in different financial modeling.
But Prosper Portland doesn't have a budget that's outside of the city's general fund. So what I'm confused by that.
And so within the cash flow model, we have assumed a pace of selling parcels on at different pages, whether it's one to two parcels a year, or if it is decreased in more of a worst case scenario. And so those revenues Prosper will accrue and use to invest back into the property, potentially make those LID payments, and also have the responsibility for our other infrastructure investments.
And I guess my last question before I let you go on, because I'm, I get more nervous the more we're talking about this. What is the worst case scenario? So let's just say that there's no major developer that wants to buy this piece and and do what we want them to do with this with this huge parcel of land. What is the worst case scenario as it relates to the financial health of the city of Portland if we are, if we make all these improvements? If we build it and they don't come, what happens?
Kimberly, if you'd like to hit some, I think we always have the opportunity to sell the parcel without that infrastructure in place, or at least a portion of infrastructure that has been completed to date. The master plan does still sit within the property, and so a developer could potentially, you know, a private party could potentially buy the property without all of this infrastructure invested. They would still be obligated to implement it and or amend the master plan agreement. So I think we would be in a position to kind of wholesale property, but with those obligations still tied to the property.
All right.
And I'll proceed to the second IGA, which is our Utilities IGA. This is an agreement between the Bureau of Environmental Services, the Portland Water Bureau, and Prosper Portland. This speaks to the first phase of water sanitary and storm sewer utilities largely in Ninth Avenue, but are necessary to service the district and connect to that transportation infrastructure we were just discussing. The funding sources for this work is from the Portland Water Bureau and the Environmental Services Capital Program. They currently have funding allocated in this year's budget and will be requesting the remainder in next year's budget. So this IGA speaks to responsibilities for cost overruns, whether they are carried by the Water Bureau and the Bureau of Environmental Services directly for cost overruns, or that the parties will discuss a split of costs if those increases are a result of delays of other parties' responsibilities, whether that's Prosper Portland or PBOT. So in the instance that our ability to catch that infrastructure causes delays and then need for kind of interim flushing activities, and the parties would agree to have to show those costs. I should also say this, this design work has progressed, and they are in the process of bringing on a CMC contractor for the construction of this work. And the third IGA is our Open Space IGA. This is an agreement between the Bureau of Transportation, Portland Parks and Recreation, and Prosper Portland. It also has two phases of work. The first is design of the park and the Green Loop have standards and ownership and operation model for this. We have a coherent design. They'll be designing that with the PNC park block design, which will continue on into construction. As we went through that phasing animation, you may remember that the construction of the park and the completion of that green loop can occur once the parking garage is demolished, which we estimate will be in 2032. The funding sources for this body of work is a combination of system development charge revenues from the Bureau of Transportation and the Parks Bureau with a contribution from Prosper Portland. Outside of this IGA, we also have an obligation for the remainder of the green, Prosper Portland has an obligation for the remainder of the green loop to the north of that Central Park, which is estimated about $21 million. Through conversations with the Parks Bureau, we have also identified an opportunity where during our demolition work, we can leave the site largely within the footprint of the park to standards and conditions set forth by the Parks Bureau. So it is an opportunity for us to have some cost savings by embodying that work within ours. So the IGA contemplates the ability for us to complete that work with reimbursement by the Parks Bureau, which is not an additional expense, but is already accounted for within the funding structure here. The Parks Bureau will be issuing an intergovernmental agreement for the design team to lead this work in the near future, and we expect that that design phase will take approximately two years. It will also, the timing of that will be critical to informing how private development partners integrate and embrace the green loop within that northern development as well. Also notably, I just want to, the master plan code requirements require that 20% of the space is dedicated to open space. So that has informed both the development density and feasibility, but also the importance of our relationship with the Portland Parks Bureau to deliver on this open space requirement.
Excuse me, Mayor, a quick question.
Commissioner Hardesty, then I have a question.
So is, was this a typo? Is it really phase two starts in 2032?
Correct. We need the time to relocate the post office retail functions into a final location. So that requires development to occur on the site. We've identified the parcel at the northeast corner. You can see it sits under what is an elevated Green Loop Plaza here. We have the ability to tuck in the retail space under that plaza. It's kind of the best use that we have because of the the decreased height requirement there to connect to the bridge. So we need that development to occur so that we can relocate the post office. At that time, we can take down the existing parking garage, which today obstructs the footprint of Park Avenue and the park, as well as the second phase of affordable housing. So we need the time to complete that relocation and demolition.
Okay.
I had a question about, well, actually, let me ask a follow on question to what Commissioner Hardesty asked. And I know I've asked this a couple of different ways over the last year or so. Is there any way to speed up those public investments around green space, parks, and green loop?
Like, we have gone through a pretty exhaustive inventory of alternate places to relocate the post office within the geography and within the specifications that they provided. And ultimately, we believe that relocation into that site is kind of the the most feasible and most efficient use of that space. And so it does request either seeking a development partner or constructing that as a standalone parcel without kind of the ability to incorporate shared parking or other uses with that adjacent remainder of that northernmost block. So we could do that as a standalone, but again, that would take the time to design and construct that space.
Is that series of investments in the park, the green spaces, the green loop? Is this being delayed due to funding, or is it something else related specific to the post office demo? What is causing, I won't call it a delay, but I'm with Commissioner Hardesty on this. 2032 seems like a long way from now.
So, Mayor, if I'll just, I'll build on what Sarah said. So you know, we, we don't yet know how development is going to occur. But when Continuum was our partner, they anticipated that they would develop along Johnson first and then do blocks nine A and C second. And so that was, and that's the portion that abuts Lovejoy. And since the post office retail function needs to be moved into nine C, really, the critical path for phase two is development of nine C. So we could expedite this if we had a development partner who would develop nine C in the first phase.
All right, that that makes sense, and I appreciate that. And that would still be a priority for me. I just feel that as we're doing a master plan development, the public infrastructure piece, assuming we can afford it and we can maintain it, that certainly would create a lot of buy in from the public to see those public amenities and have them actually be usable. I also understand that with Continuum not being the master plan development partner, their original plan was pre-COVID, and I believe it hinged upon the then fairly significant demand for office space. What do we think the prospects are, given current projections around office space?
Well, Mayor, you know, their first phase development, which we anticipated was at block six, which is right at Johnson that Sarah's indicating there. I think they anticipated that that was going to be residential and that commercial would be in the second phase. And I think our best guess is that that might still be the case, that you would start with residential. One of the things that is elegant about a master plan is that it does not dictate uses. And so we know sort of the glass box that development can occur in and the infrastructure that needs to be built out. But the master plan is use agnostic. And so as we've been in this phase of reevaluation and talking to Ecor Northwest and JLL and other developers, you know, I think we are anticipating that residential would be the, you know, would still be probably the first use, although we've heard different things. And, you know, there, there are some who think that actually commercial will be, will be ready to develop by 2025 when the site is is prepared. So.
All right, that's, that's good news, and thank you for the information. I do appreciate that. Commissioner Hardesty, do you have another question? Yeah, good.
Kimberly, thank you for that. And that actually helps me really think about what is the, what is Prosper Portland's vision about development now? We had a plan, and I agree with the mayor, you did masterful bringing that together and having a plan. And then COVID and everything else happened, and that plan just went away, right? I'm unclear of what the plan is today, other than the public paying for investments with, and then we hope that we sell things. So is your plan to get another master developer? Is your plan to get several community based development organizations? I mean, what's the, what's the master plan that I'm not, I don't know about?
Well, Commissioner, we are, we haven't figured it out in its entirety yet. We are doing what I would describe as is due diligence. So we've contracted with Ecor Northwest and with JLL to advise us. We're going to have a conversation with our board in June to share some of that, and we'll follow up with with you as well in June and July to really discuss what the findings are. I think, you know, we know that there are resources that are available for affordable housing. And so that would be in the first phase. And I think we are hopeful that there will be interest in development within the first phase by partners for a residential use. I think one of the things that we've seen through the pandemic is that those neighborhoods that have a mix of uses, a really healthy mix of uses, have maintained their vibrancy and even increased throughout the pandemic. And so I think we are anticipating and hoping that that is the kind of neighborhood, excuse me, that we will be building here. One that looks like a mixture of residential and commercial with a very vibrant retail strip along Johnson that is, you know, continues to have a mix of incomes and is really accessible to the public through the park. So you know, I know that the real estate market has changed, but the master plan as a whole remains the 20 year vision that Design Commission approved and has that flexibility to adapt to what the market is interested in, while we kind of collectively refine who those partners might be.
Thank you for that. That's very helpful, Director Branham. I guess for me, I, you know, I get a little nervous when we are investing public dollars, hoping that a private investor thinks what we've done is great, and then they will buy something or do something. Clearly, we've had no problem with that of late. I'm just wondering, just how often does the city council get to weigh in? You have three IGA's in front of us that actually commits us to like 10 years of finance to some significant city resources as the fallback, right? If all the things that you are hoping for don't materialize, then the fallback is the city's general fund. So I am curious as to what the timeline will be to keep us informed about your thinking as a board, as Prosper Board starts thinking. This is a significant question that must be answered. So I'm worried that we'll be asked to support something where you don't even know what you're going to do with that something yet. So I'm very concerned about that. That's number one. And number two, did we make a commitment to the post office that we would do something different once they were relocated? Because you keep referring to the relocation of the post office. So am I missing something? Is there, have we not completed our deal with the post office yet? Or we still have to do something else with them?
Good question. So when, when Prosper Portland and the Portland Housing Bureau acquired the 14 acre site, we agreed to relocate the retail facility within a quarter of a mile of the post office facility. So major distribution that went out to Coldwood by the airport, but the retail portion of it was, is required through our purchase and sale agreement to be relocated. And so we've, we've done the work and have identified that the best way to do that for a permanent relocation is at nine C, so on the post office facility. They are currently on an interim basis located at the ground floor of the parking lot, which Sarah's indicating there is on Ninth and Hoyt. So that was an interim location that allows us to take down the rest of the post office facility. But in terms of being able to unlock the full development, that's going to require us to move them to nine C.
And my last question before letting you finish your presentation is has the suit been resolved against the demolition of the post office?
That is still. That is still ongoing.
Still ongoing. Thank you.
And Commissioner, we can speak to, I think we have a slide that that details next steps. So.
Kimberly, I think Steve had a comment as well.
Steve, go ahead.
Thanks, Kimberly. Mayor, Commissioner, if I may, in the Commissioner's question about when we would come back, this is probably in one of your upcoming slides, but we do have a provision in the PBOT Prosper ordinance that says prior issuing notice to proceed for construction or issuing any debt construction, PBOT and Prosper will return to City Council to seek authorization to amend the financing plan to reflect current construction estimates and any new funding. So that gives us the opportunity to come back after we know about the federal raise grant.
And it looks like Ross, as a Ross, could you introduce yourself for the record, please?
Yeah, I'm Ross Swanson. I'm the Capital Program Manager for Growth for the Parks Department. I wanted to address, Mayor, your concern about the lack of green space development over the next 10 years. I wanted to address, Mayor, your concern about the lack of green space development over the next 10 years. I just wanted to say, as part of this development that we're about to engage on, part of the design we're about to engage on, we're also going to be designing in concert the park, the block just to the south of this development, commonly known as the PNCA block or the PNC parking lot. So that should actually get built within the next five years. So we're sort of marching northward with the development of the Parks Department and setting ourselves up. As Kimberly and Sarah have discussed, the inclusion of the Green Loop on all of this really does sort of hinder our ability to move the Broadway piece forward in a timely manner. Some dominoes have to fall, but we're working on it. So but there will be development in the area adjacent to it in the next five years around the Parks Department.
Thank you.
Ross, so, yes, so to the Commissioner's question, we just wanted to, before we concluded, really note that we will be coming back to you. So Prosper Portland's board is considering the site prep contracts, so moving forward with the demolition starting in June. And so that the post office building abatement and site work will begin in mere weeks. We are keeping fingers, toes, and everything crossed that the raise grant is successful, and we have good news to share in August. And then in September, would be coming back to you, as Steve mentioned, with updated agreements on the local improvement district financing, as well as agreements between Prosper and the Portland Housing Bureau and with the Office of Management and Finance on the line of credit. And then we will continue to look at opportunities for identifying development partners in close collaboration with the Housing Bureau with the goal of having vertical development timed to be prepared to come out of the ground as soon as infrastructure is complete. So with the certainty that hopefully we get through the intergovernmental agreements today that will enable, I think, future development partners to have a greater sense of certainty about that coming forward. Next slide, please. So we we just want to end by appreciating and acknowledging that this vision, bringing this vision to life, does require significant public investment. And just expressing that we believe that this investment does deliver significant returns to our community. We'll deliver significant returns to our community over the next decades through the creation of welcoming open space, multimodal infrastructure, increased access to quality jobs and affordable housing in a mixed-income community, and accommodating anticipated growth in a sustainable manner. So with that, we are just happy to take any questions that you might have.
Very good, colleagues. Any questions at this point? Commissioner Maps?
I want to thank staff for the this presentation. I just have a couple of questions. Could we pull up? I'm going to want to take a look at two slides. One will, the first one is going to be the the system development charge slides that comes in the middle of the presentation. You show the system development charges for, I think, three or four different bureaus. Yeah, that that's what that would. Could you just walk me through an intuitive interpretation of what's going on here? Someone?
And so with collectively across the three IGA, so this is the total contribution by by bureau. Some bureaus are participants in more than one IGA, particularly the Bureau of Transportation. So this investment is aggregate across their two IGAs. But this shows the investment either from system development charge revenues, or in the case of the Water Bureau and the Bureau of Environmental Services, their budget from their capital improvement program. So in the first column, you see total public investment in the infrastructure contemplated in the IGAs. And this column to the right, the second column or the third column, estimates the system phone charge revenues that will be returned to the city as a result of the development that is enabled by that public infrastructure investment. And so but for that initial investment, these revenues would not be accrued by the city on the on the site, as well as then at the bottom, additional property taxes that would also be a result of that development. So showing you on balance the cost benefit of this investment relative to the revenue return.
Okay, thank you very much. That's helpful. And then the next slide I'd like to go to is the why now slide. Great, thank you. You don't really have a slide that gets exactly at a space I'm interested in, but this slide at least raises the issue. And I'd like Prosper to help me think about the risk associated with this project. So, for example, I think on bullet, four, you talk about delays could increase the cost and risk to Prosper Portland in the future. And that's an interesting space, and I'd love to unpack that now. I guess what I'd like to hear from staff today is a deeper explanation of the risk that that Prosper faces right now. This project looks a little bit different than a lot of projects I've seen before. Could someone give me a sense of, number one, just the exposures and risks that Prosper is taking with this project? And then the second half of that of that question is what, if anything, can this council do to help you manage those risks?
And so I can start, Kimberly, please jump in. And so I think in terms of risks facing Prosper Portland, we have fairly significant holding costs currently associated with holding this property. So continued delay and and the lack of development will only increase those over time. So those are largely around security and maintenance of the existing facilities. It will go down some with the demolition of the main building, but we still have the parking garage and the operation of the post office on site, as well as 14 acres that don't have, doesn't have activity on it. And so that creates a property management challenge over time. We also have an obligation to repay a line of credit we have with the city of Portland. Our ability to repay that is dependent on our land sales. And so the timeline for that repayment is already ticking. And so we need the revenue from land sales to to enable those payments to be made. We spoke earlier about kind of once development has started and some of that initial investment in the infrastructure is underway within the local improvement district, those payments come due with the completion of that second phase. So at that point, which we estimate now is 2032, then there becomes an additional obligation for payments to repay that infrastructure. So we are hopeful, and again, we have stressed this with financial modeling, that we can sell a number of parcels, so we are not carrying a significant obligation for repayment of that local improvement district. But that does remain a risk to to the city and to Prosper Portland. And I think we also have kind of opportunity cost risk. So say with the Portland Housing Bureau, they have the ability right now to secure Metro Housing Bond Funds to deliver on affordable housing that would need to be, you know, resourced elsewhere, should we not be able to take advantage of this opportunity right now.
Okay, and go ahead.
Well, Commissioner, one way to think about development agreement is, and this is, this was true for the Hoyt Street Development Agreement and the Pearl District or others, is, you know, it's sort of this layered association of the city does X, and then development partner does Y, and then we do Z, and then they do A. And the the, when we were engaging in negotiations with Continuum, it was always anticipated that the city needed to deliver the infrastructure before they would acquire anything. And one of the big pieces, I mentioned this, but one of the big challenges was their concern about whether we actually would be able to deliver it on time. And so we spent hundreds of hours with attorneys trying to quantify that because ultimately, it is almost impossible for somebody to underwrite, you know, in in the external, in capital markets or with with banks, for them to underwrite with the uncertainty about infrastructure, because you can't have a building that can't connect to a sewer line, get a certification of occupation, right? So the the, I think, you know, this question of just how we sequence things and the risk frankly is not that different today than it was when we had Continuum as a partner. It's still important for the city as, you know, and Prosper as the owners of this site in order to be able to sell it, to move forward on the key infrastructure portions.
Okay, so it sounds like passing these IGAs is one of the probably most important things we can do today, or at least in the short term, to manage risk. And we don't have to get into it today, and we're also running kind of late. But I certainly would be interested in having a conversation with Prosper staff about other policy changes or whatnot that council could do to help Prosper manage whatever risks are associated with this very ambitious project. Thank you, Mr. Merrill. Turn back the mic.
Very good, thank you. Do we have any public testimony on any of these non-emergency ordinances?
No one signed up.
All right, very good. Does this complete your presentation, or is there more? I'm seeing a yes, there's.
We're done.
It's complete. Okay, good, no, great, great presentation, colleagues. Any further questions or comments before I move this to second reading? Good discussion, great presentation, as always. Thank you very much for this. Item 467 is a non-emergency ordinance. It moves to second reading. 468 is a non-emergency ordinance. It moves to second reading. 469, also a second reading, no, a first reading, non-emergency ordinance. It moves to second reading. Thanks for terrific presentation, colleagues, good questions. We are now moving back to the regular agenda. Item number 478, please, that is an emergency ordinance.
Pay settlement of Alana Mitch personal injury lawsuit for the sum of $75,000 involving the Portland Police Bureau.
Colleagues, this ordinance resolves a lawsuit filed against the city of Portland in September of 2021. Deputy City Attorney Beth Woodard and Senior Claims Analyst Karen Bond are here to present the ordinance. Good afternoon.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Mayor Wheeler and city council members. I am Karen Bond, and I'm Senior Claims Analyst with Risk Management. And as the mayor said, with me today is Beth Woodard, Deputy City Attorney, who will do the presentation. Thank you.
Good afternoon, Commissioners and Mayor. For the record, my name is Beth Woodard. I'm a deputy city attorney. Alana Mitch brought claims in federal district court against the city and three individually named officers arising from her participation in and subsequent arrests during a protest on August 17, 2018. Ms. Mitch was arrested after briefly blocking a police vehicle while participating in the Be the Spectacle counter protest against the Proud Boys.
That first, we were losing you for a second. Yeah, it sounds like you're back. Go ahead.
I'm so sorry. And what was the last part you heard?
Just just start with the last sentence you were reading, sorry.
Okay. Ms. Mitch was arrested after briefly blocking a police vehicle while participating in the Be the Spectacle counter protest against the Proud Boys. A jury acquitted her of the criminal charges in February 2020. Her complaint included claims for violations of her Fourth, Fourteenth, and First Amendment rights and state law claims for false arrests and battery. After preliminary discovery, the parties have agreed to settle this matter for $75,000, inclusive of attorney fees, economic and non-economic damages. The city attorney's office and Risk Management recommend approval of this settlement, and I'm happy to answer any questions you may have at this time.
Very good, colleagues. Any questions? Kealan, any public testimony on this item?
Two people are signed up.
Very good, three minutes each. Name for the record, please.
First up, we have Dan Handelman.
Good afternoon. Can you hear me now, city council members?
Yeah, we hear you, Dan.
Oh, great, okay. Again, this is Dan Handelman. I use he/him pronouns. I'm with the group Portland Cop Watch. This case is very troubling on a lot of levels. As usual, we don't have any kind of concern about the payment that you're making today, but we have concerns that there's no discussion about the underlying policies that led to this unwarranted arrest. The Citizen Review Committee actually heard this case on appeal, where there were a bunch of findings that were not found out of policy. The only one they changed to find out of policy was that one of the officers reported that Ms. Mitch was the only person standing in the street, even though photographic evidence proves that that's not true. So the officer was found to have written the inaccurate report. And of course, we don't know what happened as a result, because those outcomes are not made public. The CRC also found that the arrest itself was in policy, which is troubling, because they had to defer to the bureau under their current standard of review. But they voted to add a debriefing to the officers. So they'd be talked about their performance that day. And again, we don't know if that ever happened, because that's not reported back to the public. The videos that they used for evidence could not prove that force was used, but they also did not show that officers were not using force. So instead of calling excessive force unfounded, which was the original finding, the CRC asked for those findings to be changed to insufficient evidence, which is actually, it's called not sustained these days, with a debriefing. And again, we don't know if this officer got debriefed on this. So, you know, this money that goes out, this is a lot of money. We talk a lot about how much money's gone out for the Portland Police overuse of violence at these protests over the years, especially in the last several years. And there's nothing in the lawsuit that results in the officers getting disciplined in any way. So that's the reason I'm bringing up the CRC hearing is so that the community knows that at least there were supposed to be some talking to for the officers that were involved in this. It's also interesting in this in this story that Ms. Mitch was standing and flipping off the police vehicle. Other people who were in the street were not people of color. Ms. Mitch was wearing a Black Lives Matter T-shirt nine months before George Floyd was killed. And she was stood, I guess she stood out to the officers. And one of the things they were complaining about, that they, she, they said they were blocking their vehicle. It was kind of a circular argument, because the police were driving a vehicle. Vehicle was wider than one lane. And so any anything in the street at all would block them from getting down there. So the fact that they decided to take this giant vehicle down the street is what made her sort of leaning off the sidewalk, which I think is where she was actually standing, be in their way, because their vehicle is so large. So I really think that, you know, the city needs to have discussions whenever you do these lawsuit settlements about these policies that lead to these outcomes.
Next up, we have Mark Porus.
Hello, Mayor Commissioners. For the record, my name is Mark Porus. Use he/him pronouns, and I'm testifying as a member of Portland Cop Watch. Wondering if you can see my screen? See, since this $75,000 settlement is over the $50,000 threshold, it's landed on the regular agenda. The last PPB settlement over 50K was the $58,000 that went to Leo and Deborah Hall in April. It's really hard to know where to start on this one, because it's just something that never should have happened. I mean, how does someone get arrested for twerking? How's that even a thing? I'm hoping you can see my screen. I want to show you the iconic photo of Ms. Mitch leaning over in the bike lane, looking back over her shoulder and flipping off a truck full of riot gear-clad officers approaching from behind. You'll notice other people in the street, and you'll notice that aside from the officers dressed like stormtroopers, everyone else appears to be wearing standard attire. Some folks in short sleeves, some wearing shorts, not a full-face helmet, flak jacket, shin guards, or baton to be seen, except on PPBs officers. And you'll also notice that the only people carrying handfuls of huge zip ties appear to be Portland police officers. There's a couple still photos of the cops in battle gear with zip ties chasing Ms. Mitch, and then she's on the ground. I don't have video of the takedown. But here's the aftermath. It's it's hard to tell from the photo, but initially, two cops began zip tying Ms. Mitch, and then a third joined while the other cops stood guard to protect them from the short-sleeved, shorts-wearing community members who were marching in opposition to the Proud Boys. And later today, you have a second reading on a $25,000 hiring bonus issue for lateral police officers. I was signed up to testify on Commissioner Rubio's proposed amendment, but that's been rescinded, and now there's no way to testify on it. As Portland Cop Watch testified last week and also sent in writing, lateral hires should be required to stay with the bureau for five years to be allowed to keep their signing bonus. Thank you for your time.
Colleagues, any further discussion or questions on this item? Seeing none, this is an emergency ordinance. Please call the roll.
Hardisty.
I want to apologize that a community member had this experience while exercising their First Amendment right, especially in a city known for its racially discrimination as just part of the DNA in a state, in a city. It clearly, this was a retaliatory act, and I am glad a settlement was reached. But I am also not glad that a community member was harmed by people who are sworn to protect and serve, aight or aight?
Maps.
Aye.
Rubio.
Aye.
Wheeler.
Aye. The ordinance is adopted. Next item, please. 479, also an emergency ordinance.
Amend intergovernmental agreement with Portland State University to fund the study of Portland Police Bureau's efforts to reduce crime in the Park Rose and Hollywood neighborhoods under the U.S. Department of Justice Office of Justice Programs Bureau of Justice Assistance Innovations and Community-Based Crime Reduction Grant Program.
Colleagues, this ordinance will authorize an amendment to the intergovernmental agreement between the city of Portland and Portland State University related to the Portland Police Bureau's Innovations and Community-Based Crime Reduction Program. Here to speak about the ordinance is Nathan Leamy from the Portland Police Bureau. Nathan, good afternoon.
Good afternoon. Thanks so much for giving me this time. For the record, my name is Nathan Leamy. I'm the Financial Operations Manager within the Portland Police Bureau. Today, this is a largely technical change to an amendment to an intergovernmental agreement related to a grant with the Police Bureau, as the mayor said. For some background, on December 12, 2018, council authorized acceptance of a $779,000 grant award from the Department of Justice for the Innovations and Community-Based Crime Reduction Program, all referred to by its acronym CBCR. The original goals of this grant included decreasing crime, the fear of crime, and social disorder, as well as increasing satisfaction with city services. In line with the goals of the grant agreement, the Bureau entered into an intergovernmental agreement with Portland State University in 2020 for $258,000. Portland State University provides support for the project as a research partner. Their contributions include pre-survey analysis, crime data analysis, excellent explanation of survey results, community meetings, conducting post-survey analysis, and providing suggestions based on empirical research and knowledge of successful methods and tactics. The original grant ordinance authorized the chief of police to enter into an intergovernmental agreement, but it did not expressly give the Bureau authority to amend those IGAs. The city attorney's office instructed the Bureau to come to council for this amendment. The ordinance will allow the Bureau to amend the IGA that's already standing with Portland State University to increase it by $30,000 from $258,000 to $288,000. This increase will be paid for by existing grant funds and will not have any impact on general fund resources. This is coming to you today as an emergency ordinance due to delays within me and my team putting forward the ordinance. This delay and the upcoming end of the city and Portland State University's fiscal year require it being completed as soon as possible. Due to the last minute nature of the ordinance, we were unable to have program staff join today, but I'm happy to provide answers on the contract and provide information on background for the grant and the program wherever I can.
Commissioner Hardesty.
Thank you. Thank you for that clarification. So cut to the chase. Is this $30,000 like to finish up the reporting? Well, is that why you're asking for money, just so you can finish up the, the report writing?
Correct. So this has been, you know, due to the fact that there's been a.
I understand. Yep, yep, yep. And I, I'm really interested in this report because it started when we were just a regular city in July of 2019. And then we went through a lot in the time period that this report covers. So I am very interested in receiving this report when it's completed. And thank you very much. When I read this, I thought, oh, this is just to finish out writing the paperwork, right?
All right. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any further questions? Any public testimony on this item?
Two people have signed up.
All right.
First up, we have Dan Handelman.
Good afternoon again, City Council. This is Dan Handelman. He/him pronouns with Portland Cop Watch again. I didn't know anything about this grant. Usually, we don't really pay that much attention to them when they come up on the City Council agenda. But I happened to read the Star News newspaper when I was sitting in a business a few days ago, and there was a front page article about it. And it just seems like they're talking about these armed police officers going around the neighborhood and helping clean up trash. And we're having these discussions about how short-staffed the Police Bureau is and how they're not able to run from crime to crime and shooting to shooting. And instead, we have them doing things that frankly, the public safety support specialists are envisioned to do, the things that don't require an armed police officer. Now, I see today's agenda item says that the public safety support specialists are taking part in this, but the article I read features a, you know, a fully armed police officer. And as Commissioner Hardesty just noted, this grant went into place in 2019 before the city started rethinking what police and policing should look like. And I don't, it's not clear how much more the term of the, the police officers walking around the, the community part of the grant is going on. This has to do with the reporting on it. But I'm really hoping that the federal government will not frown on it if you stop using armed police officers to do these neighborhood walks. And that's all I've got today. Thank you.
Next up, we have Mark Porus.
Yeah, hi, Mayor and Commissioners. For the record, I'm Mark Porus. I use he/him pronouns, and I'm testifying as both resident of Grant Park Hollywood neighborhood and as a member of Portland Cop Watch. As a resident of Grant Park Hollywood, I am surprised that until seeing this item and the article that Mr. Handelman mentioned in the May issue of the Hollywood Star, I hadn't heard of the program. The Star article titled Strategies for Safer Streets says that the grant includes overtime pay for an officer to walk for a couple hours on Wednesday and Saturday mornings to talk to people in the Hollywood neighborhood, check on any issues raised by residents or business owners, and check for stolen or abandoned cars. So approximately $500,000 of the grant that didn't go to PSU for the study must have at least partially gone to pay armed officers overtime to do things that would be better performed by public safety support specialists. Speaking for myself and my family, I would prefer to see unarmed PS3s in the neighborhood than cops with guns. The impact statement says that the program seeks to build public confidence and trust in police and the perceived legitimacy of the criminal justice system. PBB sworn officers have done much to erode public confidence and trust as the never-ending Department of Justice settlement agreement continues to remind us. And as stated before many times, PS3s should be the norm rather than the exception when PBB needs to have contact with community members. And this is a perfect example of when PS3s would be preferred. The impact statement also says, talks about the final evaluation, which will be presented to the Bureau of Justice Assistance CBCR program management as a requirement for PSU's final deliverable. And like Commissioner Hardesty, I'm interested in seeing this. I hope that when the time comes that council will invite PSU to give this presentation to City Council and allow the public to hear the findings directly from the researchers. And coincidentally, that $500,000 amount that, that's PBB's share of this grant, that's the same amount that PBB has asked for you to allocate for hiring bonuses for PS3s and lateral hires without requiring any length of service or vesting period for the payout. You still have the opportunity shortly in item 480 to require lateral hires to remain with PBB for five years in order to keep their lavish signing bonuses. Thank you.
Colleagues, any further discussion on this item? This is an emergency ordinance. Kealan, please call the roll.
Hardesty.
Aye.
Maps.
I just want to say I'm delighted to see that this program is before us today and up and going. I could be wrong, but I believe that I actually helped create this program way back in the day when I worked at Park Rose. I can remember sitting in our office coffee table with Officer Jason Jones on one end. On the other side, we were sharing lunch and talking about ways in which we could bring community policing back to East Portland. I think we wrote a grant, this is probably the mid aughts or something, to figure out how we could both figure out how to get foot patrols, we could find out a way to sort of get cops out of their cars and walk in the Park Rose neighborhood quite a bit. And ultimately, we were able to get, I think, an early pilot program of this up and going. And now I think back probably about six months ago, I was doing a community meeting out in, probably for the Hollywood Business District or something. And I, when I was there, there was some representative from the Hollywood Business District, which is actually, I think, handed out. What do you call the, basically card, the thing you put on the wheels of your cars to keep them from being stolen? I remember that from, from that grant being drafted or at least being kicked around years ago. I really thought this is an innovative program. I can tell you, I saw the real difference that made out to East Portland and Hollywood. I've been disconnected from it for years and years now, so I don't know the day, the day to date, but I'm glad to see it's alive. And I think it's really appropriate that we have an external evaluation of this program to see what difference it's making. But I think it's an important part, or it could be, in my experience, it's an important part of reinventing policing along the lines of making it more humane and less militarized. Glad to see it go forward, and I'm glad to vote aye.
Rubio.
Aye.
Wheeler.
I'd like to thank everybody for their hard work on this. It's my understanding that the work wraps up in September of 2022. So this really does just get it over the finish line. Like everybody else here, I'm eager to read and hear about the results of that report. I vote aye. The ordinance is adopted. Thank you for being here today, Nathan. Next two items are second readings. The first one is item 480, please.
Authorize Portland Police Bureau to offer hiring bonuses to the public safety support specialists and lateral police officers in amount not to exceed $500,000.
Colleagues, any further discussion on this item? Commissioner Hardesty.
Maybe you can answer this question. I think it's reasonable to have a requirement for years of service before we give somebody a $25,000 bonus. What is the, how do you anticipate this $25,000 bonus working for lateral police officers to move to the city of Portland?
It's a great question, Commissioner. I would assume that we are going to structure it similar to that manner in which it's constructed now, in which when you receive your bonus, you receive it in, your hiring bonus for a regular police officer hire. Right now, you receive it in, in a manner of 1,000 at the time you're sworn in, 1,000 at the time that you complete your probation, and 3,000 at the time that you are actually off of, pardon me, 3,000 at the time you're off of probation. Totally ignifies.
And it's normally like a two-year process, right? How long does it take you to get off probation once you're on your own?
A year and a half.
And so one, one, and so how do you see that working with lateral police officers?
You know, I don't know what the ultimate outcome would be, but I would assume that it would be something similar to the manner in which we implemented in the process with the regular hiring bonus for regular police officer positions.
And is there any way we can ensure, because I do hear from the public, we don't want to just give somebody a $25,000 check, and they're here for a year, and then they decide they don't like it and they leave. How does, how is the council assured that there will be a, a process that we could support? I mean, if, if we vote yesterday, then you just go off, then you just hire people, right? I, I'm just concerned about what that, how we're going to hold people accountable for that bonus. I mean, it'd be great to come for a year, get a $25,000 check, and then go off and retire somewhere else. What's your plan to assure us that there would, either you'll use the system that's in place now, or you will provide the council with how you're going to make sure that that happens?
Well, I think the best answer I can give, Commissioner, is there has to be, we have to repost these positions according to our, our HR department. We have to repost for a lateral officer hiring bonus position. In, in doing that, we will then have to structure what that pay process will look like. I agree that paying $25,000 upfront is concerning, and we don't have that in place right now with regular hiring bonuses. So I believe we would just structure it the same or in a very similar manner.
Thank you for that. I appreciate that. Mayor, I am concerned about just not having clarity about how the bonus would be implemented. I mean, we're talking 25,000. So, you know, I'd be, I'd like to recommend, if, if needed, that it be 5,000 a year for five years as compared to just kind of leaving it open-ended in that way. Is that perceived as a friendly amendment? I'm not sure.
I, I'm not sure. Captain, if you don't make this decision, who makes the decision?
That's a real good question, Mr. Mayor.
Colleagues, I'm, I'm pulling this back to my office.
Thank you, Mayor.
Next item, 481. Also a second reading.
Amend the FY 2021-22 revised budget to reduce general fund appropriations in the Community Safety Division by $1,400,000 and place in general fund contingency for appropriation in the FY 2022-23 adopted budget for the Summer Ceasefire Initiative.
Colleagues, this is a second reading. We've already heard testimony on this. We've received a presentation. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please call the roll.
Hardesty.
Aye.
Maps.
Aye.
Rubio.
Aye.
Wheeler.
Colleagues, in mid-April during the spring bump, we set aside this funding for summer violence prevention. And in the intervening weeks, the Community Safety Division has worked very, very hard to... Derek, did you have something you wanted to say to everybody? I'll take that as a no. In the intervening weeks, the Community Safety Division has worked extensively to identify a data-driven approach to investing these funds. CSD has met with numerous stakeholders, including community members, researchers, community-based organizations, city bureaus, county offices, school districts, and council offices. In my view, these substantial efforts demonstrate responsible stewardship of this funding, not a necessary delay. CSD's legwork on the front end will ensure that the implementation of summer gun violence prevention efforts move ahead for maximum impact. With the recent gun violence we've experienced in our city, and I know each and every one of my colleagues are deeply concerned about this, we simply cannot afford to derail these efforts. We have to press forward and make this funding available for the entirety of the summer. And I appreciate the fact my colleagues agree wholeheartedly on that. I vote aye. The ordinance is adopted. And next, we move to 482, and this is a non-emergency ordinance.
Approve application under the Multiple Unit Limited Tax Exemption Program under the Inclusionary Housing Program for Brooklyn Apartments located at 3260 Southeast Milwaukee Avenue.
And I'll turn this over to the Bureau.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Members of Council. For the record, my name is Matthew Schaubold with the Housing Bureau. I am here seeking an approval for a property tax exemption for the Brooklyn Apartments. It is a 120-unit building that is using the bedroom reconfiguration option under the Inclusionary Housing Program, which is, is why it is on the regular agenda. It will provide seven two-bedroom units at 60% of the median income, and the Bureau is recommending approval. I'm happy to take any questions the council has.
Colleagues, any questions on this item, if I can find my list here? Sorry, geez. Did you have a question, Commissioner? No questions. Is there any public testimony on this item?
No one signed up.
Very good. This is a first reading of a non-emergency ordinance. It moves to second reading. Next item is 483. This is an emergency ordinance.
Declare property located at 1610 to 1612 Southwest Taylor's Ferry Road as surplus real property and authorize the Portland Parks and Recreation to dispose of the property by sale on the open market.
Commissioner Rubio.
Thank you. The item before us today is a property that was acquired in partnership with BES using SDC and Gray Green Funds to provide new trail access to Marshall Park and to protect the existing park setting. In order to preserve the one-bedroom home on the property, a portion of the property has been carved out to be sold. I would like to now introduce Dylan Paul, Portland's Park, Portland Park and Recreation's Property and Business Development Manager, to provide counsel with an overview and answer any questions.
Thank you, Commissioner, members of City Council. I'm here today to talk about a brief Category One disposition. In 2017, Ordinance 188504 was passed by City Council, which approved the original funding of this property with the expectation that we would bring it back to you for a Category One disposition to retain the house. This item is being brought in accordance with the city's real property disposition process as a Category One disposition. The property was acquired by the city as part of a larger acquisition with the intention that portions not required to meet the business needs would be disposed of. Important to say that the original acquisition of this property was to form, enhance pedestrian access from Taylor's Ferry Road into Marshall Park. And that trail alignment is in fact, one of the primary reasons for the larger acquisition. And it is being retained with the sale of this property. As Commissioner Rubio already stated, a small portion of the larger property has now been carved out to preserve the existing home, and we're seeking approval today to sell that on the open market. Proceeds of the sale will repay, repay the original funding sources. And it's important to know that we're working with P-Bot to enhance additional frontage for pedestrian safety on this property as well. Existing one-bedroom home is in need of substantial repair and improvements. That's all I have.
All right, very good. Colleagues, any questions? Thanks, Dylan. Appreciate it. Do we have any public testimony on this item?
No one signed up.
Call the roll.
Hurdisty.
Thank you, Commissioner Rubio. I know that you did due diligence to determine whether this land was appropriate for us to use it for additional, any other opportunity, and you found that it was not, and so I absolutely support this. I vote aye.
Maps.
Aye.
Rubio.
I want to thank Dylan for all his work on this, and I also appreciate the thoughtful and intentional process led by Parks to consult with other bureaus prior to bringing it forward to council. I vote aye.
Wheeler.
Aye. The ordinance is adopted. Back to the consent agenda, 470, emergency ordinance.
Pay attorney's fees settlement from Kessler v. City of Portland litigation in the sum of $20,000 involving the Portland Police Bureau.
This ordinance resolves a lawsuit filed against the city in March of 2021. Chief Deputy City Attorney Karen Moynihan is here to present the ordinance briefly.
Thank you.
Good afternoon. Oh, there you are. Look at you, in person.
Good afternoon.
What a pleasant surprise.
Wait, let me change my hat. Good afternoon. Very briefly, Mr. Kessler had filed a request for a disciplinary record with the Police Bureau. The Police Bureau declined to provide that document because it was subject to an exemption under the Public Records Act. The, Mr. Kessler appealed to the district attorney who ordered the city to actually provide the document. The city did, but redacted the personnel number or the PRNR number, also in accordance with the Public Records Act and prior district attorney rulings. Mr. Kessler then filed a lawsuit because he said that this redacted copy was not in accordance with what the district attorney required. Also, he alleged other factors as well, including challenging the Police Bureau's prepayment fee of $30 for each public records request. Pursuant, the Police Bureau, on its own initiative at that point, gave seven days' notice to the officer whose disciplinary record had been provided and said they were going to turn over his personnel number. Seven days later, the city provided the document unredacted to Mr. Kessler. Nonetheless, the lawsuit ensued. The court always mandates a alternative dispute resolution process, so the parties did go to ADR mediation just a few weeks ago, and we resolved this matter for $20,000 from Mr. Kessler's fees, because in fact, the city did provide that document late. I will note that after the city had chosen not to give the personnel number to Mr. Kessler, there was a subsequent circuit court ruling which put the writing on the wall for the city that we in fact could lose in this case in the future. So, we decided to settle for $20,000 pending council resolution. Also, because Police Bureau has greatly streamlined its process for public records on the outset, the Police Bureau has agreed to reduce its prepayment by at least $5, so a prepayment fee would now be $25 starting on July 1st. That's it.
Colleagues, any questions? Any further testimony?
Yes, we had two people sign up. I believe the first person has dropped off. Let me double-check.
While our very awesome councilor is doing that, I just want to disclose the Portland Department's lawsuit against Mr. Kessler. I do not need this circular conference of interest on this issue without clear on public record.
Thank you, Mayor. Liani Reyna, but I believe they've dropped off. Next up, we have Dan Handelman.
Good afternoon again, Mayor Wheeler and council members. This is Dan Handelman. Key him pronouns from Portland Cop Watch one more time. And I'm glad there was a presentation before I was speaking to this item. I pulled off the consent agenda because this item, like many other lawsuits that come before you, is about as transparent as mud. It wasn't even clear what the underlying public record was that Mr. Kessler was trying to obtain, but the city attorney just said it had to do with an officer's discipline record. Now, we, there was a very public lawsuit Mr. Kessler worked on in the, that was in the press about the officers who were wearing numbers on their uniforms instead of their names. I'll get back to that in a minute. But the piece of information in this document you have before you is referred to as a PRNR, and it's not spelled out what that means. I checked the entire city website. This, today's ordinance is the only reference to that acronym that, that was turned up in my web search. The actual term is PERNR, and again, searching the city's website, I only got more instances where PERNR is listed, but it doesn't explain what that means. So, I'm wondering if the city attorney might spell out what PERNR means. This item should also not have been included on the consent agenda because it involves more than just Mr. Kessler and the PPB Records Division. As you just heard, the city is talking about lowering the basic cost of the records request from $30 to $25. It also allows them to go lower than that. It was $10 for many, many, many years, and it jumped up to $30 years ago, and that's very, that's a huge hurdle for some people. Though this may not be directly connected to those officers who hid their identities, by putting two-digit numbers on their uniforms, it's important for the council to discuss the implications of community members needing to dig around to identify members of the Police Bureau. Who knows how many cases were either not reported to IPR or were never processed because officers were wearing those numbers on their uniforms instead of their names. The names are required to be warned by Directive 312.50 about identification. Then Chief Jamie Resch okayed the obscuring of officer names, and the police commissioner never challenged that decision. It was made ostensibly to protect officers from being harassed, but the true motivation and outcome were to protect them from having criminal charges, complaints, and lawsuits filed against them. We think it's great the city's willing to negotiate public policy improvements, like the records cost is part of lawsuits, but it's not appropriate that those discussions take place in private mediation. Again, put it on the consent agenda and then sail through without public discussion, which is why we pulled it from the consent agenda today. And I hope that you will consider asking the Bureau to lower that initial cost even more. And just finally, you know, you're here getting the advice of your chief attorney, and earlier there's a reference to trusting the advice of the city attorney, and I just can't let go without saying, we trusted the advice of the city attorney when they said not to release the slides about the training, and it's time sometimes to make decisions based on common sense and your own knowledge instead of always trusting what the city attorney says. Thank you for your time.
Colleagues, any further discussion on this item? Seeing none, please call the roll.
Hurdisty.
Thank you very much for that explanation. I vote aye.
Maps.
Aye.
Rubio.
Aye.
Wheeler.
Aye. The ordinance is adopted. Next item, 471, emergency ordinance.
Authorize chief administrative officer or designee to negotiate and execute one or more lease agreements for training space for the Specialized Resources Division Program.
Colleagues, the Specialized Resource Division, SRD, is made up of multiple specialized units. The Special Emergency Reaction Team, sometimes referred to ASERT, the Explosive Disposal Unit, EDU, the K-9 Unit, the Crisis Negotiation Team, the Behavioral Health Unit, and the Traffic Unit. Each of these units use specialized skill sets that require many hours of training to properly prepare its members to respond to specific incidents. These training needs to be conducted in a location that can be consistently available each week, accommodate indoor and outdoor training to run scenarios, and provide parking for up to 50 vehicles as well as training equipment. Up until May 1st of this year, the Office of Management and Finance was able to provide city-owned space at the Sergeant Jerome Sears Armory, we usually just call it the Sears Armory, to support the SRD, but that space is no longer available for use. This ordinance authorizes OMF and PPB to identify and execute lease agreements for non-city-owned spaces to replace the training space that's been lost. Maddie Sauter and Pauline Gobel from the Office of Management and Finance, and Leanne Barnett from PPB are here to introduce this item. Welcome, Maddie, Pauline, and Leanne. Thanks for being here.
Thank you. Hello, council. I'm Maddie Sauter. I run the Division of Asset Management, so that's OMF Facilities, which includes all of PPB's assets and then City Fleet. I've never had the pleasure of sitting on a council meeting for four straight hours, but I got that pleasure today, and I admire what you have to do.
Now, you know what a pleasure it actually is, don't you?
It's pretty, it's pretty amazing. I admire your, your perseverance and diligence. So, yes, I run OMF Facilities, and so as part of that, we have a property management function, and we are required by ordinance to come to council when we need to rent facilities, even if they're lower no cost outside of the properties owned by the city for critical uses. So, as noted, the Jerome Sears Building was where police were doing all of their mandatory trainings for many years. When the Safe Rest Village moved into the Jerome Sears site, they lost access to that facility. We searched high and low for both city-owned properties and communal properties that we could potentially partner with others on to, to rent, and have found a facility, but of course, it's not a city-owned facility. So, we are here looking for broad permission, not just for this rental purpose, but for all of PPB's training purposes to help find facilities. We have located a facility. It's only going to be available for two years. It is cost-neutral with what PPB was paying before, but we want to make sure that we have the ability to rent that facility, and then if, if and when that permission or that lease ends, that we have an ability to go out and continue to support police with their training needs.
Commissioner Hurdisty.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Maddie, for that presentation. So, how many acres do we own at the Portland Police Bureau's training grounds right now? And why would we not be thinking about building whatever else we need on ground we already own?
Yeah, I'm sorry. I'm not quite sure of the acreage, but...
Huge, though. We got this little tiny training facility on this huge land out on Airport Way, and it just seems to me that we don't actually utilize what we have, and we just want to go out and get something new. I also know that the sheriff, the Multnomah County Sheriff's just like got this fancy new training facility that they got a $10 million range on. And again, it just seems like we don't partner well with other public safety organizations, or we don't utilize the space that we have. So, I'm, can you answer just like, why aren't we using, why aren't we thinking about, how do we utilize land we own to actually add value to the training that we need to do?
Sure, and I'll actually tee us up for something better, which is, I would like to see us in the fall have a conversation largely about facilities capital spending. There are no dedicated accounts within the city to help support new capital investment and OMF facility assets. So, there is no funding to do anything. It's more than just land. It's also facilities. So, we have deep concerns about PPB's assets, their physical assets. We would like to see actually more partnerships, even internally, between police and fire, BoAC, park rangers, to help invest in a vision around public safety, but at present, there, there is no capital funding.
So, Maddie, I mean, the bottom line is that every public safety, community safety bureau has infrastructure needs, and so again, we, we love to do these one-off things, and I am, again, I, what I want to do is like make sure that we're making decisions that actually benefit the entire city and not just one particular bureau. And they may need space, but I also know that they own something that other people don't have, which is land that could actually be built on. So, anyway, just wanted to put that out.
Yeah, no, I completely concur. In fact, we need a planning department, which requires staff, and we would need capital funding. And that's actually true for public safety. The other area that we're deeply concerned about is operations and maintenance facilities, like the Kirby Garage. So, I think, I am very excited to have you tee this up because we'll be coming in the fall to, I think, speak more completely to what our internal infrastructure needs are, and that's actually beyond OMF Facilities. That also includes some of BTS's fiber planning, and it also includes EV infrastructure planning and City Fleet. So, there's an awful lot of need there, and there's not, there are not dedicated funds for that. And so, that's something we'd like to make more transparent and have a more robust ask around, because you're, you're spot-on. When we have things, we do need to use them, but we also need the, the money for construction.
Commissioner Maps.
Um, I appreciate Commissioner Hurdisty's observation, but I also want to push back on it. It's just not consistent with my experience of the police training facility. I was just out there a couple of weeks ago. Actually, I really found that place to be packed in pretty tight, if I recall correctly. They have a space for some outdoor driving drills, but I also believe that they don't have enough space to do all the kinds of driving spaces that they need to do. And if you saw the kind of training, the sort of tight circles they have to, to drive in in order to practice some of the skills they're doing, it's amazing they do it in the space that they have. You know, and this is, and this is illustrated by the fact that we actually have to break up training between two different spaces. I just have no idea literally how you could pack more into the space that we have there.
Commissioner Hurdisty.
I appreciate that, Commissioner Matt. So, let me just say, you know, fire figures out how to do it with other community partners on a regular basis. So, again, it's like you either partner because you share resources or you don't.
And, and I actually can speak to that. We routinely partner with all other community agencies, and in fact, you know, Washington County, the Metro Gresham SWAT Team, Plaquemus County, those are our current partners, and each one of them for their special operations are also packed to the gills. So, they're also seeking out free and easy-to-utilize space. So, again, we 100% support the, the notion of partnership across regional bureaus, even internally, you know, between us, fire, BoAC, park rangers. Those would be great collaborations to have. One thing I am looking for is actually a North Star or community vision about what community safety looks like. I'm hoping that that comes about at some point, and then from that, we can actually have a facilities vision that says, how would that be supported? So, those are some of the things we're pulling together right now to address council on in the fall, so that you can see kind of the order of operations of how we would actually like to build coherent programs around this, around public works needs, and so forth.
Maddie, before we go back to Commissioner Maps, this is one of the reasons we created the Community Safety Division. And so, my hope is you're already working with the Community Safety Division, capital asset investment, management, and support. I agree with you. It's been a long-term weakness of the city of Portland, and that's why we end up with these massive capital construction projects after the facility has already fallen apart. And it's not just physical facilities, it's also assets. And I, I was pleased to hear you mention some of the, the hard assets around technology, infrastructure that we need to be concerned about. It's also capital investments in equipment that's critically important. There was one bureau, I won't mention them, because I, I happen to like this bureau, but they had some lifesaving equipment. Five years ago, they came to council and said, oh, by the way, you need to give us $3.5 million because our Critical Path lifesaving equipment that we use in emergencies is kaput. And I'm like, where, where was the plan for this? Did anybody think about this over more than a few months when, when the equipment started falling apart? And it's literally equipment that was required for the health, well-being, and safety of our public employees. And, and so that, to me, was my first heads-up, that we're not doing a very good job of long-term capital asset planning. And so, I really appreciate the work that you're going to be doing and bringing forward some, some better ideas about how we can take what's historically been a fragmented system and bring us together with a smart, rational, long-term strategy that not only includes asset management, but also scaled investments to make sure that the assets we have actually stay in one piece, which would be refreshing and fabulous. Commissioner Maps.
I'll let us move on.
Yeah, it's probably, let's, let's do that. Any public testimony on this item?
No one signed up.
Everybody gave up on us. They're exhausted.
I almost gave up on you.
By the wayside. And yet Maddie was here till the bitter end. Thank you. Colleagues, this is an emergency ordinance. Please call the roll.
Hurdisty.
I look forward to a broader conversation, but today I vote aye.
Maps.
Aye.
Rubio.
Thank you, Maddie, for those explanations, and I look forward, whenever you present and talk, I get very excited in, in anticipation of that conversation. I vote aye.
Wheeler.
This is a critically important emergency need for the Portland Police Bureau. They, they did step up, and they gave us access to a facility that they were using for training so that we could address the housing crisis. And I want to stress that I appreciate that they did not throw down obstacles and roadblocks. They worked with us to make it happen, but part of the quid pro quo there was that council would work with them to find at least a temporary space that they could lease, and this is making good on that commitment. Maddie, thanks for your hard work on this. I know it's been a real challenge for you and your team, but just great work all around. Thank you. I vote aye. The ordinance is adopted, and I believe that completes our business for this morning. We are adjourned until 2:00 PM.